Good evening and welcome to the Orange County School Board's Rule Development Workshop and Work Session this Tuesday, June 4th, 2019. And Dr. Jenkins, you're recognized.
Thank you. We have three areas to cover. First, we will do our budget priorities, followed by our legislative update, and then we have a list of policies that staff will take you through along with our General Counsel. Budget Priorities, as you recall, as you may recall, is an opportunity first for our CFO to review what the numbers are looking like in our actual budget, and then an opportunity for board members to weigh in on where they would like to see any priorities for large numbers of additional dollars coming in from the state, should they actually be coming in from the state. Nonetheless, we go through this exercise so that board members can stress where they would like those limited dollars to be invested, and any ideas they might have on the capital budget as well. So with that being said, Mr. Kelly, take us through it.
Thank you, Superintendent. I have a brief presentation for you here. Starting out, our projected FTE, or full-time equivalent number of students for the coming year, is 210,457. That's an increase of 3,764 FTE over the current year. Overall, we have a funding increase of about $80.9 million to the budget in FEFP dollars, and that's $27.8 million of those dollars will be needed just to fund those new 3,764 students. Our base student allocation is increasing $75.07, or 1.79 percent. That is much better than last year, as you recall, when we had an increase of only $0.47 in our base student allocation. We have some new categoricals, as well as some significant increases in a couple of our categoricals. First of all, the best and brightest was rolled into the FEFP for the first time. In prior years, these dollars were not included in our per-student funding. Since the local school board really has essentially no control over how these dollars are spent, this really kind of artificially inflates our overall per-student increase for the year. Also this year, we have a $1.6 million dollar increase for us for safe schools. In addition, we have a new categorical called turnaround schools. This is funded at $500 per FTE to qualifying schools for intervention and support strategies at DNF schools to turn around their academic performance. The dollars that we spend on a turnaround plan must be approved by the Department of Statewide, there is an increase of $5.8 million in mental health dollars, and for us, that would be $493,000 in our district. We also saw an increase in the FRS rate that was approved by Tallahassee. Our normal retirement rate went from 8.26 percent to 8.47 percent of salary. So that in turn cost us about $2.4 million for that rate increase. In addition, we have health insurance increases that are moving forward, and currently, that's really in the bargaining process, so we really won't know the impact to the budget until that collective bargaining process is completed. So overall, the FEFP per-student funding increase is, or the total per-student funding is approximately $7,627. That equates to a per-student increase of $284, or 3.87 percent over the second FEFP calculation. And remember, that includes the BSA plus those categoricals, and that includes that best and brightest and things that really artificially inflate the dollars. So if you take out those categoricals and the new ones, as well as those ones that just significantly increased, I went over in the prior slide, our real increase is more like $159 per student, or 2.17 percent. Fortunately, we also have the one mill in the district that was just renewed for another four years. So if you add those dollars on top of what the FEFP provides, our per-student increase is $196 per student, or 2.45 percent. This chart shows our per-student funding from the second calculation going all the way back to July of 2007. We use a second calculation because that is the calculation in effect at the time of the adoption of the budget. The July 2019 number at the far right is the amount from the conference report, which is also called the first calculation. We will get the second calculation around mid-July after the tax roll is certified by the property appraiser. Overall, you can see the per-student funding since prior to the Great Recession. While we definitely needed the special millage renewal, you can see we're still about $660 less per student than we were back in July 2007 when you include inflation. And the overall inflation factor, CPI, is really less than 2 percent on average over those 12 years. And with that, I'll turn it back over to the Superintendent.
Madam Chair, we're ready to hear your discussion.
You're recognized.
Hi, good afternoon. While this is a bleak news, once again, we're coming from the state of Florida. I am happy with a couple of things in the state budget. I believe that the new money coming in for mental health will be a good thing for our students and our employees. I think additional support for mental health is going to translate into some positive things happening with discipline. That's one of the things that we've consistently heard from our teachers and our employees that we need to work on. I think that that will translate. I'm happy with that. As far as the rest of our budget, I'm going to repeat exactly what I said last year, that we need to just turn over every cushion, dig down behind every sofa, and every penny, as far as I'm concerned, needs to go to our people, and continuing to give them, you know, whatever raises and salary increases that we can pull out. I just think that our people are our priority, and they translate into helping our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Well said. Member Gordon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ditto.
Make that two ditto's.
Okay, yes. Make that three ditto's. All right. Member Bird.
Thank you. I'm going to say ditto as well. That was one of the first things I wanted to say. Anywhere we can find it, anything we can find, I agree, needs to go back to our hard workers in our district that make us as great as we are. Besides that, two other things, well, actually, one other thing right now. As, I don't know if all of you are aware, that many of our high schools are losing their baseball field lights now, like, it's happening now. I know that I've been contacted by some concerned community members in my community, and we have one school that has a, one community that has a community baseball team that uses the field, and they won't be able to use it anymore. So I would like to just bring up the possibility of us replacing the baseball field lights for the schools that are losing them, and I know that we would also need to do the same for our softball, girls' softball field lights. So that's something that I would like to just...
Dr. Jenkins, can you help us out?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And so Ms. Bird and I actually had discussed this previously. I told it would be the time to bring it up. Here's what the history is. In certain schools, there were either booster clubs or athletic clubs that raised money and put in lights for baseball fields. Then the district had some repercussions around Title IX. Any place that had raised their own money and put it in baseball fields years ago, more than a decade ago, then we had to also make sure there were lights for the girls' softball. Fast forward, some of those light installations were not deemed safe. In fact, if you remember, those board members that were here at Boone, I believe, we had one of the lights fall. Nobody was injured, but the wooden poles are really not considered to be safe anymore. And so Mr. Morris and his facilities folks had an inspector go out and look at those wooden light poles, and every school that has those, we have written recommendation that they need to be removed. And of course, initially, we would say you had an outside entity or a club raise money for the lights, and so that would be how you get them replaced, but we will take them down once they've been deemed unsafe. The more we thought about it, I asked the team to do some research. Surrounding counties do have lights on their baseball and softball fields, and so we are really somewhat the outlier. And so when I mentioned to Ms. Bird that she could bring it up, because around budget time in the past, we've looked at some district-wide need to use from non-recurring dollars. And so the best example I can think of, and most recent, is the rubberized tracks. In essence, some of our schools had rubberized tracks, and others were at a disadvantage. They did not have rubberized tracks, meaning their athletes were running on asphalt and perhaps doing more joint, giving more joint discomfort, and not as well-prepared for state competition, which is always on a rubberized track. So a year and a half ago, the board said, "We want all of our schools," it's an equity issue, "all of our schools to have rubberized tracks." Well, the baseball lights in those areas, in those schools where they have concrete poles or the safer poles in place already, creates a similar inequity that I think Mr. Morris and his team believe can be accommodated from our non-recurring dollars to make every school have both the baseball and the softball lights, with the exception of any school that has a provision that prohibits those lights. I'm looking, actually, I was looking at Ms. Gould. But it's one of those equity issues that I think could be considered. We're certainly happy to consider it because it's similar to the rubberized tracks. So I wanted to give that background, that history, Madam Chair, members of the board.
Thank you so much. Member Bird?
Absolutely. And let me mention, though, Member Bird, before you continue, that a number of board members punched in on this subject. So what I'm going to do is, when you're done, come back and see if anybody has any specific comments on this before we take everybody else in order, okay?
Okay.
So go ahead.
I just wanted to bring up another point. As Superintendent mentioned, we are at, we are, you know, we don't have the lights like the rest of the counties surrounding us do, and I know, in particular, there are some counties that really receive a lot of extra income from renting their facilities, and that comes from being able to have the night games and use those lights. So, you know, that's something else to consider as well, that we're missing out, I think, on a big market of, you know, we have a lot of people, from what I understand, they go and skip us and go over to Lake County to use their facilities, or over to Seminole County. So I think that's something we need to consider as well.
Okay. Let's just pause for a minute. Any of the board members that push their button to be heard on this particular subject? Okay. Let's go, and then in the order, I've got Member Gallo on this subject. And then, Member Gallo, we'll come back to you on just general issues in a minute.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just would like to tell Member Bird that I agree, that I think that the baseball fields do need lights. We have an inequity situation going on where some do have, at Winter Park, has lights that are the wooden poles that will now have to come down due to safety concerns. East River and University do not have lights, so I would love to see that resolved and have all of our softball and baseball fields have lights. Thank you.
Okay. Member Lopez?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just need more explanation on the health insurance increases on Slide number three.
On the health insurance increases, we've, as you recall, last year, we did not raise rates at all. They remain the same. And as we look at the results of the trust, the trust has been losing money, and so based on our actuarial studies, we need to increase the, we need to make adjustments in the plan to the tune of 18 percent. And so those adjustments can be done a number of ways. It can be through premium increases, it can be an adjustment in benefits, or it can be just additional contributions from the board, any combination of those. So those have to work their way through the bargaining process in order to come up with the end result of what that would be.
Health increases?
I'm sorry, Madam Chair. I apologize. One clarification, the board is responsible per contract for the first 10 percent of that increase, and so that's automatically off the table for bargaining, because the board by contract already assumes any increase up to 10 percent.
Member Lopez? That answers your question? All right. Then we'll go to Member Gould.
I wanted to just also chime in in support of both the lights from non-recurring dollars, because I also see the revenue potential and the enhancement to our programming for our students. But also on the raises, it is a ditto, but I want to point out a couple of things on why this is so important, and that we continue to try to work with Tallahassee to get them to invest properly in education. We have a 2.7 percent unemployment rate in the state of Florida, which makes the marketplace a highly competitive place. We are seeing in central Florida, the average minimum wage by market, not by law, coming to $15 an hour. And we are not funded in a way to compete with that. And you could go through almost every one of our professions and find professional parallels, and we are grossly under that wage market because of our funding levels from the state. We do not get back what we send up to Tallahassee from the central Florida area, and I get that. I get that we want equitable schools across our state. I get that. But without a core education, we do not have the chance of economic prosperity. So K-12 education, our technical colleges, our dual enrollment programs and partnerships with our universities are all part of preparing our workforce, and without those things, it just, we don't have an economy, period. The end, without pulling it from other states or other countries. So I don't know how we continue to get that message to the state, but anybody who happens to listen to this, and if you're active, please talk to your legislators.
Thank you. Thank you, Member Gould. Member Gallo?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I want to say that, and I know that we'll get an update later about the legislative issues regarding the budget, but I'm happy to see the shift of the best and brightest. I know that it goes into the FEFP, and it weakens it, it makes it look we're getting a lot of money, but it's got to go to categorical. But the fact that they broke that up, and they changed the way we can pay bonuses, it's not going to be tied to an SAT score anymore. I think we're making progress. Thank you. I'd like to just ditto what Member, Cobert, said. Our priority has to be our teachers and our staff. We've got to give them what they want and need, which is a pay raise, so I definitely agree with that. The question that I have is, with the dollars that we're going to get for mental health, the $493,000, and I don't know maybe if you can answer this, but what really will that give us? Like, we know we have a mental health problem. We're like last in the country in mental health spending. They really haven't addressed that in Tallahassee. I know that First Lady DeSantis started this whole mental health campaign, and they're going to try to bring billions of dollars to mental health. Will we be able to piggyback off that, and what does almost $500,000 really get us in the district as far as mental health?
Great question. Mr. Kelly?
So part of that response needs to come from staff, either, I'm assuming, Eileen or Dr. Vasquez. They're actually still looking to get some clarification. We know we can't buy counselors with it. I know, because I tried. Counselors, guidance counselors are prohibited from being purchased by that. I think we'll be simply purchasing more mental health counselors. Dr. Vasquez, do you remember a number? You can come to the table.
Still have to have a plan approved.
A table would have been fine. Work session, workshop.
So the dollars that we will receive this upcoming year will require a plan just as it was last year. We are looking to provide, excuse me, 90 percent of the funds have to be used to provide direct services. Part of those dollars are going to be used to, our plan is to provide a social worker for each of our high schools that will be able to provide direct services to the students. We're also going to look at professional development, which is also part of the requirement, tracking of students and services that they receive, and follow-up is also part of what is required. And as the team puts forth the plan, we're looking to feedback we received this past year from our schools. They continue to want more behavioral support and more training, but that does have to come as direct services. Mental health counselors are only allowed to provide certain number of sessions for support, and some restrictions apply because they don't serve the entire school population. They are targeting specific students, and so that's why we're looking to broader positions such as a licensed social worker that can do home visits, that can do small groups, but could also provide that one-on-one counseling because they're certified.
Member Gallo?
That's all I have. Thank you so much.
Member Castor Dennel?
I want to chime in here, so people don't think I'm just up here eating some dessert at the table, but we all have that. I just want to state that the salaries for our teachers and paras and all the support professionals would be my top priority as well. And then, Member Gallo, everything that you just asked are on my page of notes here, the same questions and same priorities for addressing the gaps in the mental health services that we're providing for the students, and any way that we can get to a more comprehensive guidance program at each school, whether it's a social-emotional curriculum and additional training for teachers, social workers, mental health counselors, guidance counselors, we are in such great need, and our students are in such great need. Any way that we can continue to build that out is, remains a priority for me.
Thank you. I love how much this board is on the same page, and each of us coming from our own direction but still being in the same place. Completely agree on the high priority of compensating all of our employees adequately, and I think, Member Gould's comments about the very, very tight labor market, coupled with the fact that we have the, one of the tightest and most expensive housing markets now in the nation, really compounds the challenge for us, I think, in maintaining the employees that we have in the career path that they chose, that we desperately want them to. Good news, I continue to feel encouraged by the comments of Speaker Corcoran, and I think the recognition that salary's an issue, and if we can get him to champion that in the legislature, he will get farther than any of us could ever hope to get, so I'm encouraged by that. We're looking forward to an opportunity in the fall to invite Speaker Corcoran down to tour some of our schools, and we wanted to wait until the fall, until we're fresh and starting back up again before inviting him down, but I think reinforcing and supporting his initiative in that regard would be really important. Secondly, mental health. I'm just beyond thrilled that that is a priority for the whole board, and I'm trying to remember, I think it was, you remember Cobert, who mentioned discipline and the connection, this very, very strong connection there, and I think one of the concerns, we're a little bit off of budget, but that I hope that we can have some dialogue around, is the process for Baker acting, and when and how we do that. But I also want to recognize, Superintendent serves on, I would think you're still on the Youth Mental Health Implementation Commission, and that was an initiative that I started in response to Sandy Hook, and also, as I think many of you all know, in response to my own family, my brother's significant problems with mental illness. So there is opportunity to partner with Orange County, and I'd like for us to revisit how we can do that in a way that Orange County Public Schools is comfortable with. They now have money. Last thing I did was fully funded their budget. They have money for navigation services. We can only do so much in our schools, but there's a lot that needs to take place at home, and helping parents know where those resources are. So I know this money that we have isn't going to go far enough, but I think if we can revisit what are those resources available to us through other partnerships, maybe we can take that one step further and help with both discipline and suicide rates and the other challenges that we are seeing and are symptomatic of the economic situations of many of our families. So I just, again, I'm so, so thrilled to serve on this board with all of you guys. It's just awesome. Member Gould?
Thank you. I just wanted to have a follow-up on the mental health. I know that we started the Mental Health First Aid a few years ago with some key employees, but if that can be part of that training, that's such an effective, if we could get every one of our staff members kind of trained in identifying those issues, because everybody has different interactions with our students and in different environments, and so that's really important. I know there's a lot of training elements out there, but we did start that, and I'd love to see it finished. And the other question that I had, could any of this money be used to enhance some of our school nurses at a higher education rate if they have that mental health component as well as RN? Because then you have a whole other high skill set that's, you know, not a mental health counselor, but certainly, and somebody who can triage and also be more inventive, and they often have a great relationship with more kids.
You're recognized.
We are training staff on the Mental Health 101 with our partnership with UCF.
Dr. Vasquez, for some reason, we're not picking up your mic. Can you pull a little closer? It's probably on, but just not close enough, maybe? Or no, it's not on?
Is that better? Yes?
I just want to make sure the, Victor, I just want to make sure that if anybody tunes in later to hear this, they can hear you. Thank you.
We are continuing to train our schools and staff on the Mental Health 101 with the partnership that we have with UCF. This year, we had representatives from each of the schools that were the SEL contact begin to participate in that expansive training that will continue through this upcoming year. We will also continue to provide behavioral support and behavioral training because there is quite a disconnect. Many times, our staff are associating behavioral issues or discipline and mental health, and they may be related, but oftentimes they're not. And so looking at school-wide systems and procedures such as PBS is one of the focuses that we will have for this upcoming school year, making sure that happens K-12, and we will continue to look at the support that's given to the schools through the variety of individuals. The nurses is something that we have started to look at. Part of that is the cost that's associated and what the return on investment will be. If we could get more personnel, that provides more direct services, but that is something the team is looking at and bringing back as part of the proposal for the plan.
Okay. Thank you very much.
That is our last comment. Dr. Jenkins, do you feel like you have adequate direction? I think it's pretty clear.
We have direction.
Absolutely. And so on the issue of the baseball lights, will facilities be coming back with an estimate, or does that just get rolled in, or how exactly does that work for my first budget?
We'll get the information, the estimate, and roll it in by the time we have a proposed budget.
Okay. Wonderful.
If I recall, it was around the $10 million mark.
Mr. Hart, you're not ready to brief the board on this yet, are you? Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. So next, we have our legislative update.
We are here to give the wrap-up to the 2019 legislative session. We'll briefly touch on the budget side of the presentation, and then go into three major, three of the major substantive bills. The other bills are listed at the end, which we can go over and have... The other bills are listed at the end, which we can go over and have conversation with. So we're trying to make, I know many of you've had legislative updates from other venues, and we'll also receive one through FSBA. We're going to try to hit the highlights and then make sure that we can answer any questions. We know time is tight today, so. I'll turn it over to Cody and Eileen, who did a great job this session, and so very, very happy with their work and what they're doing with our legislative delegation. So I'll turn it over to Cody.
Good evening. This is the same information that Dale touched on. If you want me to go into what's on the slide, I can definitely go into that. Proceed? Oh, next. Okay. Same, same exact information that Dale has on his slide. We can definitely provide you with some information offline as well.
Good evening, everybody. I'm going to go over a couple of bills with you. Just so you guys are aware, we just picked the three major bills to go over with you guys because we have such a short time. However, all of the presentation is available to you. There are slides on every other bill, that past education bill, so you can take a look at those. If you have any questions, please contact either Cody or me, and we'll be happy to go over anything with you. So we're going to start off with Senate Bill 7030, which is the school safety bill. Couple changes that came about as a result of the bill. The bill now permits all classroom teachers to be armed for purposes of participating in the Guardian program. If you recall, under Senate Bill 7026 from last year, there was a restriction for classroom teachers that has now been removed. I do want to point out to you, if you have not heard, that moments before we walked into this room, we got news that the officer from Parkland was arrested and charged with child negligence, culpable negligence, and perjury as a result of last year's shooting. So I don't know what impact that would have to somebody's motivation as far as them wanting to become a guardian is concerned. In addition, sheriffs are required to assist districts and charters to comply with the Safe School Officer requirements, so that assignment of one-on-one officers to the school, the sheriffs are required to assist us and the charters to comply with that requirement. A sheriff is allowed to contact another sheriff's office if they don't want to do the Guardian program, so that the other sheriff's office can run the Guardian program in our county if we so choose to go that direction. And then lastly, only the superintendent or the charter principal are authorized to appoint a guardian, so they can't be appointed by the sheriff. Another requirement in the bill is that we must promote Fortify Florida by advertising it on our website or other publications and also installing it on all district-issued digital devices. If you don't know what Fortify Florida is, it is that software that's been created in order for you to report any incidents that you think might affect school safety. And then in addition, the bill also gives the commissioner compliance authority over districts to ensure compliance with the Marjory Stoneman Douglas Act. That was not something that was in his authority previously, and I'll go over that in just a little bit more detail in a little bit. The Office of Safe Schools has been given some additional duties. These include providing annual training to districts and charter personnel on site security and creating a risk assessment tool and training district and charter folks on how to use that risk assessment tool. They are also tasked with coordinating with FDLE to provide a data repository for access by appropriate district and other agency personnel. In addition to that, they have to provide technical assistance to districts on the FSSAT reporting tool. They must also convene a school hardening and mitigation work group to come out with best practices that will then be given to the commissioner, and then the commissioner will give recommendations to the legislature. They have to develop a behavioral threat assessment instrument that we have to use in the districts, and that has to be developed no later than August 1st of this year, so we should have that prior to school starting. We have, they have to monitor compliance by school districts with safety issues, and so they are the ones that would report any non-compliance to the commissioner. The commissioner would then take that information and report that to the President, Senate, Senate of, I'm sorry, President of the Senate, House Speaker, and the Governor. And lastly, they have to publish a list of the total number of safe school officers in the state and the number that have been relieved or disciplined as a result of misconduct. The bill also contains a number of references to statutes that charter schools are no longer exempt from, so they have to comply with all of these requirements that you see listed up there, all those different areas. In addition to that, there's been a couple of changes to the drills in the sense that now drills for active shooter and hostage situations have to be conducted with developmentally appropriate and age-appropriate procedures. There was no decrease in the number of drills, so we still have to do, I think it was nine drills a year or something we were doing, that is still going to stay the same. In addition, the board has to adopt policies to ensure accurate and prompt reporting of school safety incidents, and we're already working on bringing that for you. The bill contains a provision that our board must collaborate with charter school governing boards to facilitate charter school access to all safe school officer options available under the law. And we do have in our current SRO contracts a provision that complies with this requirement already, so we were already doing that. And then lastly, I want to point out that there's a provision in there that says if a board, either through adopted policy procedures or actions, denies a charter school access to any of the options they have for a safe school officer, then we would be responsible for assigning an SRO to that charter school, and the only thing we would get reimbursed is their proportionate allocation of safe schools. So this bill was signed by the Governor on May 9th, so, and it went into effect on that Next, I'm going to go over Senate Bill 7070. 77 was the big train bill that we had this year. The bill, I'm sure you heard a lot about it, first of all, created the Family Empowerment Scholarship Program, and it is funded through the FEFP. This is a new voucher program, and it's different from the previous voucher programs in that it is not funded through that tax credit program that they were running. Instead, it's coming directly out of the FEFP this time, which, by the way, is a violation of Bush v. Holmes. The bill states that the scholarship will be initially funded for 18,000 students during the 1920 school year, and then thereafter, that number can be increased by 0.25% of the state's total public school enrollment. And lastly, the amount that a student generates with a voucher is potentially more than that student would generate sitting in one of your seats in one of our classrooms. And the reason for that is what they receive is 95% of the basic program of the FEFP in the district and where they live. And then they're entitled to all categoricals, which they would not necessarily be entitled to if they were sitting in our, in our, in our classrooms. So the only other categorical that they would not be eligible for would be the ESC guarantee. And I just want to point out that private schools do not have to comply with the Marjory Stoneman Act. They don't have to pay their teachers' Best and Brightest Program bonuses, and so, but they're still getting all of that money included with them. There was also talk, when this bill was being debated on the floor, that somehow or another, the 95% was saving the state money because we were going to get to keep 5% of that. I don't know where that came from, because this money does not pass through us at all. So I just want to clear that up as well. The bill also establishes the Community School Grant Program, and this is a wonderful addition to our law where now we have a grant program for our community schools. So this is like our community school, similar to Evans and the A-School. And by the way, we received a lot, a lot of kudos for our Evans and our A-School up there. You know, they kept calling us out, and our folks went up there to testify. They did an excellent job, which helped in getting this provision through. So with the grant program, districts are required to have long-term partnerships with private entities in order to qualify, and priority is going to be given to districts that currently do not have a community school program, so we're not likely to be on the top of that priority list. And also, the Center for Community Schools at UCF is going to oversee the grant program. The bill also has changes to the definition of persistently low-performing school. It has been changed to include schools that have earned three grades lower than a C in at least three of the five previous years, and that used to be the only thing that defined a persistently low-performing school. But now they've added an additional criteria which, or it hasn't, and it hasn't earned a B or higher in the most recent two years. So that greatly expands the number of persistently low-performing schools that we, that, or schools that would be labeled that. And then in addition to that, if you can remember the wonderful Schools of Hope concept that came up a couple of years ago, the areas where those schools can be located have now been expanded. It used to be that those schools could only be located where persistently low-performing schools were. Now they can be built there, they can be located there, or they can be located in what they call opportunity zones, and those opportunity zones have been designated by the federal government. So it greatly expands the number, the areas, I'm sorry, where these schools can be located. As you've heard, they've restructured the Best and Brightest Teacher Program. It removes the teacher's performance on the SAT and ACT as a factor to determine their bonus, and instead, it's now created a three-tier bonus system. The three tiers are, the first one would be recruitment, and recruitment is for, is a one-time bonus for newly hired teachers that are content experts in math, science, computer science, reading, or civics, and this bonus is for up to $4,000. We can prorate this if we don't have sufficient funding. The second bonus is a retention bonus, and that is for effective or highly effective teachers who teach in a school for two consecutive years, including the current year, and are in a school that has improved an average of 3% or more in their school grade over the prior three years. If a teacher qualifies, she will, he or she will receive $2,500 if they're highly effective and $1,000 if they're effective. The last tier is a recognition bonus, and this is for effective or highly effective teachers selected by the principal based on performance criteria established by the district. And I do want to point out, there's no amount set for the recognition bonus, but you only get to fund that if you have enough funding after funding the first two tiers of bonuses. The Best and Brightest Principal Program has also been changed. Now, the principal has to serve at the school for four consecutive years, including the current year, and the school has to have improved an average of 3% or more in school grade over the prior three years. The amount they would be eligible for is $5,000. There's been some changes, some other positive changes when it comes to our building program, facilities. An educational plant survey and needs assessment will no longer be required when a district uses local funds, including the 1.5 discretionary millage. And it would be solely if we use local funds. If we were to use any kind of state funds, we still have to do the educational plant survey and assessment. In addition to that, there's a provision in there, I don't know if you remember this, but I think it was 7055 last year, that included a provision in there where you guys, by resolution, could waive certain provisions and SREF that we don't have to comply with as long as there's sufficient hurricane shelters in the area, and that would require a supermajority vote under 7055. This bill changes it, so now it just requires a simple majority, if that's ever something that you want to take advantage of. In addition, it has a requirement that the DOE and the Office of Economic and Demographic Research review and adjust the cost per student station limits by January 1st of 2020 and annually thereafter, which will be good since, as you know, construction prices kind of fluctuate consistently, especially right now. It removes the sanctions if a district goes over that cost per student station limit, so we will no longer be sanctioned for that. And the definition of student station has changed to more accurately reflect the cost of building a school. It removes legal and administrative costs and site improvement costs from the definition, so it gives us a little bit more wiggle room on our cost per student station. Now, the most exciting changes, at least the ones that Cody and I heard about the most, were the changes for teacher certification. Everybody was very, very happy about these. So now, the general knowledge exam is only required for classroom teachers as defined by statute, which now excludes some previously included personnel such as guidance counselors and librarians. The district must provide teachers with information on state and district preparation courses if a teacher fails the general knowledge exam, which I believe we already do. Teachers no longer have to pass the general knowledge exam within the first year. Now they have three years to pass the exam. The temporary certificate can be extended for two years if a teacher is rated highly effective the prior year or if they've completed two years of mentorship. And the exam fees are being adjusted, and there's a requirement there that the sections have to be prorated. So if a teacher fails only one section of the exam, then they could, they have to prorate that portion of it. I think there's four. The exam was going for like 180, so, you know, they would have to prorate that portion of it. And I do want to let you know that as of today, we've been able to identify 221 teachers that will benefit from this change in the law, and our folks are still working on identifying some additional teachers that may also benefit. And then the last change is to teacher preparation programs. They've been modified to include some additional requirements in there. This bill was also signed on April 9th, I'm sorry, May 9th. It goes into effect on July 1, except for the portion that deals with the general knowledge exam. That went into effect the minute that became law. I'm going to turn this over to Cody.
So I'm going to go right into it. This is the workforce bill. I think that everybody on the board and superintendent and our OTC people played an intricate part in this, in this bill when it came to the pushing for more apprenticeships and pre-apprenticeship programs. So thank y'all. Without y'all's help, it would, this wouldn't have happened. So thank y'all. By September 1st, by September 1st, the DOE is required to publish an annual report on pre-apprenticeships and apprenticeship programs, and they also are required to assist school districts and other providers with notifying students, parents, and the community on pre-apprenticeships and apprenticeship programs, so. To the next one. Yeah, thank you. So the bill also, the bill also encourages districts to adopt policies to celebrate academic and workforce achievement of students. The bill creates the College and Career Decision Day to recognize seniors and their post-secondary plans and encourages post-secondary planning. So if you all see on, if you're football or basketball, you know, fans, you see on TV that they're getting ready to do a signing day, now they want to do this for a career and workforce. So just kind of pushing that over to that side, the academic side and the workforce side for us. The bill also removes the date on which Academic Scholarship Signing Day was held. So previously was held on the third Tuesday in April of each year, so that's gone now. So we go to the next slide. The bill also requires a course in career and educational planning to be completed in, by middle school, so the course can be taught by any instructional staff. It can be a standalone course, or it can be a course integrated into another course. So how many of y'all knew what you wanted to do in middle school? Not me, me either. So just go further on. The good part, this is one that I, that I think we played an integral part into as well. Allows for two mathematic credits to be earned when a student completes Algebra 1A and Algebra 1B through a two-year course. Within that process, a student must be counseled that, that the university may require additional math, so that they have to be told that there may be some additional requirements that they have to meet before taking this route. Also allows the computer science credit to be substituted for either one math credit, not in Algebra 1 or geometry, or one science credit, but not in Biology 1, if the commissioner design, designates course as equally rigorous. So they actually have that option as well. The bill also allows a student to earn an industry certification in 3D prototype printing to satisfy up to two mathematic credits, but not in Algebra 1. We can go to the next page. Thank you. So here's another one that we advocated for last year when we were saying that the financial literacy course should be a course on its, it should be an option, and we pushed it and pushed it and pushed it, and here we go. So the bill removes the financial literacy to, from half-credit of economics requirement that was coupled in with social studies, so it's now, so will now be a standalone elective that we have to offer. So it requires districts to offer a half-credit course in financial literacy as an elective in the beginning of next in the beginning of next year, 2019, 2020. All right, next page. Oh, they don't notice right there, sorry. So in the beginning of 2019, 2020 school year, a student is eligible to complete an alternative pathway to earning a standard high school diploma through the career and technical education pathway option. So what that includes, we're gonna go into a little bit more in a little bit detail, a student must complete 18 credits and earn a GPA of a 2.0. Same credit requirements as a standard high as a standard diploma in ELA, math, science, and social studies. Complete two credits in CTE that result in a program completion industry certification. Complete two credits in work first workplace learning, but can substitute two electives. So I'll go in a little bit more offline, I can go in a little bit more detail off of that. Districts must must districts districts are required to incorporate CTE pathway options in student progression plan as well. Again, I can still go in a little bit more detail right offline with you if you want to meet. If we can go to the next slide, thank you. So to address overlapping services, the bill requires career pathway agreements between state colleges and career centers. The annual the annual agreement must be submitted by May 1, and the agreement must address each certification program offered that is aligned with an associate degree. The bill also requires the bill also requires career centers, career centers to have a dual enrollment agreement with each high school in the district and submit it to FDOE by August 1. Go to the next slide. So to expand the pre-apprenticeships and the apprenticeship programs, the state legislature was generous enough to give us this this creation. So it creates the Florida Pathway to Career Opportunities Grant Program for high schools and other providers to sponsor apprenticeships and pre-apprenticeship programs. Just getting more, we're able to have it's a competitive competitive grant that our districts were able be able to apply for, and we can extend expand our programs, our our existing pre-apprenticeships and apprenticeship programs. The bill also allows full-time adjunct educators to be certified for up to three years, and also full-time certifications. It also, full-time certificates are non-renewable. I know that we are losing a lot of adjunct professor, I mean adjunct teachers in our CTE program at a rapid rate. We're losing them to industry, and I just found out what to industry meant, and that was to a company that's coming in and that's just grabbing our our teachers and offering them more money. And so we wanted to help them stay here and retain, you know, retain and recruit. So what we did was there was a there were we're allowing them to be certified up to three years, and, you know, if they decide to come on, keep going, they can keep coming with us. So the districts are required to post requirements for adjunct certifications on its website, so we have to post that on our website, and include the subject subject area tests needed to demonstrate mastery mastery. And finally, districts are required to report annually to the department the number of part-time and full-time adjunct certificates issued. And that's all I have. Oh, and the bill hasn't been signed yet. I was surprised because that one passed 113 to 0, and with bipartisanship, and it wasn't passed yet. He hadn't signed it yet, I'm sorry.
The next slide is just a list of all of the additional education bills that were passed. Some of these are going to require some policy changes, and we'll be bringing those to you in August before school starts. So those things will hopefully be in place by the time school starts. And then, like I said, there's some hidden slides after the next slide that I'm going to show, and that has an explanation of all of these bills in a little bit more detail. So please feel free to look at those, and if you have any questions, again, please feel free to come and talk to us.
Thank you. Let's begin with member Karen Castredin.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a question about each of those main bills you just presented. The first one, Senate Bill 7030 relating the Guardian program. Because you mentioned before you started explaining that the the SRO, the sheriff deputy was arrested for neglect while on duty, do you know if there's language in the bill about Guardians, will they be held accountable as well if they did not engage an active assailant?
There's there's no language that addresses this issue in the bill. There's no qualified immunity, none of that.
In the in the bill or current legislation, maybe, do you know if there are any expectations of duties for Guardians?
I would say their expectations would be whatever's included in in the legislation, which has some parameters set out there, and then whatever information or direction we would get from the Office of Safe Schools.
Okay. Thank you. I have another one about the 7070 and the principal bonuses. Just a clarification, principals are eligible for the $5,000 bonus, it said, for if they're at the school, or if they are a principal for four consecutive years, is that at that school?
Correct.
Okay. And then for Senate Bill 7071, when it comes to the the CTE pathway, beginning in 2019, 2020, next year, does that apply to the rising ninth graders, that that access to that pathway, or is it, does it apply to all high school students when they have that ability to get their regular diploma?
That's a great question. Let me check on that, and I can get right back to you, okay?
Sure, thank you. That's all.
Thank you. Next week, oh, next we have me. So being a little bit, well, no, being brand new to this process here, let me ask a question, and it might it might be appropriate, I don't know. On 7030, the requirement to use the Fortify Florida database hotline, whatever, and we primarily, I think, use Speak Out. So will we will we be, we'll have two? Okay. Is that a discussion at a future time that we discuss whether or not we, do you have to use both? Because I think that if the data is not being captured in one, and my understanding is they don't synchronize, so, direction there, or is this the wrong time?
No, no, I can actually comment on that. What we think we should do initially is just have both of them available, because Speak Out is so commonly known to our community and to our students. We think there'll come a time that we can retire Speak Out and and stick mainly with Fortify. We just hate to retire it now because people are familiar with it, so we would make them both available.
Okay. Okay, yeah. The only concern I have is that my understanding is those two databases are in no way communicating with each other, so in the collection of data and predictability of events, it might be challenging. So second question regarding Slide 26 on 7071, and that pertains to the algebra and the two math credits, and the requirement that that we must counsel the students that this may not be adequate for college, although I was very glad to see them include that. I was one of those kids when I graduated from high school, and a couple of years later decided to go to college, I didn't have adequate credits. Yeah, that was eye-opening. Yeah. But the good news for me was that I did get accepted into FSU and not University of Florida, and I never lived to regret that. It was a great, great, great move on my part not to get accepted. Anyway, a little division, it never hurts. Okay, so the real question here is, will we, and Dr. Jenkins, probably a question for you, if we're counseling the children, will we also be incorporating counseling the parents? And I don't know if counseling is the right term, inform me.
Absolutely. And actually, we stopped that option. We tried the two-year, spreading Algebra 1 over two years, and we actually stopped that practice. But if we were counseling parents, we counseling students, we'd include the parents as well. But we just checked to make sure we cut out that splitting Algebra 2 over two years because we didn't see the results we were hoping for from it.
Okay, thank you. Because I vividly remember my mom attending that meeting with me, and I would not want to have been the principal. She was not a happy camper. Anyway, it all turned out well. The last thing, one of the bills that is is included in here but not mentioned is 7103, and it's one I have a serious concern with that has not made it to the governor's desk yet and hasn't been signed. And it's a little complicated, but our CEAs, the process that we use to collect additional funds from developments that are taking place where we already have overcrowded schools, those funds that allow us to meet the capacity needs usually through portables initially, and ultimately through advancing our schools a little sooner than we would have, the result of which, we've got some great numbers you'll be hearing soon, and I'm going to steal the thunder, we've reduced the number of portables by 50% since we started this process while increasing the student population. So it's been working, not as well as everybody would like, but it's been working. Problem is, 7103 will require us, for any additional exaction, they call it any additional money, land contribution that we receive from a developer, that we have to give them the equal amount of credit in impact fees. So what we do right now is we take the impact fee portion, and the credit portion that we don't currently get, well, when there's a development coming in, the school's overcrowded, we take the impact fee, we add to it the credit, we're made whole. Now we have to give them whatever credit we're giving, we have to give it back to them. So in other words, we're just getting the impact fee, we're not getting anything additional to that, which we're going to discuss at our next planning meeting, but creates a huge problem for our capacity enhancement agreement process. And if we can't issue capacity enhancement agreements, what that means is, based on our internal local agreement, we're going to be saying we don't have capacity, that's going to have a profound impact on the development community. So challenge for us is it's made it out of the House, it's made it out of the Senate, it was a bill not moving, it kind of hit the runway really fast and got passed and got away from us. And so we're trying to stop it at the governor's level. I think it's going to be heavy lifting. But the other part of it pertains to the the school sites that we get, yeah, first time that's ever happened, school sites that we get in Horizons West at 225 and acre, I can explain why, but it's a very fair deal to the developers because that land was once burnt-out orange groves worth next to nothing, we're not going to have to pay full market value for. So it's a concern, and I just wanted everybody to be aware while we're having this conversation in case we likely lose that, this is going to be complicating everybody's lives here in central Florida. Did it? Okay. Okay. Vice Chair. I did not create this timer.
I know. You did good. You did good. You had seconds.
But it does hold us accountable.
Yeah, you had seconds. Okay, you shouldn't have brought that up, because I think Jeff and I had a meeting yesterday that I, you know, you just can't, we really have to keep on top of this, and I really have to thank Cody and and Scott and Eileen, all of the hard work that you guys do for us, based on the board. I love it, you know, going there and doing what we ask, have our legislative agenda and getting things done, and you brought it back. So you brought home a little bacon, but we're going to have to send you back out there. Because I'm gonna be honest with you, you really, we really got to stop this, because, you know, there was a time we could do this. Being vested is one thing, and I think I shared this with Mr. Jeff Hart on yesterday and Jessma Lambert, you just can't, just because they got it, we as a board have got to be strong. We just can't let them just come in. Vested one thing, but when you're bringing in everything else and then going to leave us crippled, you know, which is under capacity and all that, or overcapacity or whatever, that's just not going to fly. And 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 Mayor Jacobs, that starts at the county level, because a lot of that stuff that is passed there should not have been passed, and you know that, and we've been fighting that a lot, because what is passed at the county level, it reflects on us, and then we have to take the bulk of it, and then say, we're going to take it. Well, we're not going to take it. Laying down, yeah, right, we're not going to take it anymore. We're going to fight back, and we're going to ask for things. We're going to ask for things. If you're coming in, they're going to come in and build their little, put up their little flowers and houses, and then they're going to leave, and then we're left either with something good that is going to develop, or we're going to be left with slums. And what I see going up now, if they don't get a hand on it, we're going to be in a bad shape from what I see going up. But that wasn't my thing, and I've given up a couple of minutes on that. Mine is, if I can ask Cody, if you could go back, just just go back, I'll tell you when this stops. Okay, slow up a little bit. It's the workforce, and I really forgot after Mayor Chair Jacobs brought that in. Now go back down. Okay, I may have to come back on because I had, I didn't see a page, and I don't have mine up. Oh, the College and Career Day, go back to that, it had something to do, okay, the, okay, the College and Career Day, go down one more. And go one more. It was the one just before the ending. So how many more after that one? I couldn't, and I had to take my time to do, okay.
Two.
Well, in any district, it's a, okay. I I wanted to ask, well, let me just generally ask, they gave all these mandates and the workforce, but I don't remember, I don't remember if Dale had in his budget appropriations for anything in here with the career center and setting it up. They're asking us to do all of this. Listen, I work very closely in the library as librarian with the career person. I don't even know if you are aware, throughout the states, they're getting rid of the career teacher. I mean, the career teachers are the first one that have been cut in several counties. So and then they weren't fully compensated. And then I'm looking at our career teachers that's going to have to put this program out. What kind of compensation has been appropriated for these services? So that was my question.
That's also a good question. I can do some research on that, make sure I get you the.
Very good. I will accept that, and I thank you so very much, because that's very important, and I would like Madam Superintendent through the chair, I would like Dr. Jenkins to check into that too with the appropriations as it relates to our chief financial officer and his funds and the budget. Dale, thank you so very much.
Thank you. If if it would be okay, can I respond with the board mind if I jump ahead and respond to the concern that Vice Chair Gordon raised? So Vice Chair Gordon, you will remember this vividly. After, yeah, well, after we got that charter amendment passed, that required that before the county or any cities approved any development that wasn't vested, going back to that word, that magic word vested, had to come here to get approval. Well, the one time that the county tried to approve development was all that massive development down by Universal, and south of Universal, you know what I'm talking about, Mark Watson.
I got a school out of there.
Yes, exactly.
My bottom are very good, but we got a school.
Yeah, we, you and I teamed up on that.
We teamed on that.
And that came from me, actually, after the board voted, I was on the losing side. I brought it back for a motion to reconsider, which was not well, well-liked, but made a heck of a stink, which required a week's notice, and you and I got together, and I think we even had a press conference over it. And that's where we both joined forces. I think that was the first time I really, yeah.
And I'm glad you brought that up, because not only did we join forces, I shared with Jeff Hart on yesterday, and Jessma, wait a minute, we got 13 to 15 acres free out of that.
We did, absolutely.
And we had many meetings out there, and I still believe that there will be a school within that vicinity.
And you remember, they tried to give us that, I think we got it moved, they tried to give us land right next to the water treatment plant, they moved it.
Yes, and we said, no, no. We didn't say, no. Jeff, what do you think I said?
Yeah, I know what she said. She can't say it. Yeah. So for those of you who don't know, I know I knew who Kat Gordon was, but this was our, this was our fight, and it was over that very issue. We did, the county was claiming, and I was on the board, but the but the county chair and his attorney were claiming it was vested, and it was not vested. So you are not, yeah, absolutely, it was a good fight. It was a good fight.
And that's a good fight, we're going to have to.
Yes, if it's not vested, and vested is is an easy way, it's a quick term, and I think we need to be on our guard about that. I think, and we're going to have a workshop, and we're going to talk about, absolutely.
Then they used the horses, remember they brought.
Yes, they had two horses, two lonely horses out there, and they got a nag exemption. I felt so sorry for those horses. They claimed there was a whole bunch of other horses that were coming any day now. No, we never saw them. We saw two little lonely horses out there, but anyway, another, yeah, but anyway, the point being, that vested word is a loaded word, we always need to be mindful of that. The good news is, we got a great legal team that I think is on very much on top of it, and Woody was probably over there when all that was going down. He might have left us by then. But anyway, I appreciate you bringing that up, because that's a great concern, and when we talk about our capacity enhancement agreements at this next workshop, it's going to get very interesting if this bill passes, because there will be no opportunity for us to take back what we're taking right now, and if we are saying no, and development's not going forward, I think it's. we are saying no, and development's not going forward, I think it's going to be a mess.
It's going to be a mess.
So, we're better off with tools in the tool chest, and I think developers are, I've always thought, they're better off if they can pay and go, than be stopped. So we may lose that ability, and I'm just preaching to nobody, but the team here knows it, and I want to echo your words also, while I've not started the timer, thank you very much for the work you guys have done up in Tallahassee. Okay.
Wonderful.
Yeah, it was great, I'll never forget.
Did you look in trailer?
Oh, yeah, oh, I remember, oh, gosh, bribing people.
Like a city.
Yeah. Okay, Member Gold.
I am looking forward to the conversation about the CEAs as well, since this is a pretty important issue, especially for the community in the West, that has the largest comprehensively planned community that I would envision not getting finished, if things don't continue to go, and then there'd be less, we wouldn't get all the red lights we need, and all the substations we need, and all the connections for our roadways, and our bike trails, and that would be bad. So, thank you very, very much on a lot of the workforce, and our CTE training, six years, for that adjunct professor language, six years, I am so thrilled, it's been worth it just for that, to get there, and get a little movement, so that we can attract the right professionals to work with us, and get some flexibility for them. I am thrilled with this focus on career, I am concerned about more mandates and the hours that we have for kids to really be able to explore passions. I hope that we will have the ability to kind of be creative, so that we don't just eat up more elective hours for them, and figure out a way to meet all of the various mandates we have for the core curriculum and these things. I am totally in favor of what the content is, but I am so disappointed they don't unmandate some erroneous and unnecessary things in order to be able to give our students the robust experiences they need to know the direction they want to go with their lives. So I just wanted to point that out, that I am thrilled they're listening, I'm thrilled that they've made some direction, but there's only so many hours of our only partially funded day as it is.
Excellent point. Member Gordon, I'm sorry, Member Colbert, I'm looking, what the heck I'm bringing is?
So I'm going to begin with bringing us back to a full circle moment.
Okay.
Remember before the legislature convened, we sat down with our local delegation, with Eileen and Cody, and if you look at the list of things that passed that were positive, pretty much everything on there were items that we presented to that delegation. And I know that Cody and Eileen's fingerprints are all over this legislation, I know the specific conversations they had, tagging on amendments and getting these things passed, the adjuncts, the alternative credits in math and science, the CT pathways, workforce education, and really importantly, the general knowledge exam, the extension and the cost, that is absolutely critical, because I don't think the general public is aware that the pass rate on the general knowledge exam is lower than the pass rate on the Florida bar exam. So that tells me, it's not what's going on with our teaching students, something's wrong with that exam. So they need to fix that, but this at least gives our young teachers some breathing room, and our ability to help them get through that. So I'm very pleased with that, and I just want to publicly acknowledge your specific fingerprints and work that made so much of this happen, so thank you for that. And then, just one question, on that family empowerment bill, that unconstitutional piece of legislation, do we know yet, I'm sure it will be, if there is a challenge to that legislation?
There's not been one that's been filed yet, but we have heard a lot of rumblings that there will be one forthcoming.
Thank you, and congratulations, you two. Wonderful. Next, Member Gallo.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I have a couple of questions. First, thank you, I want to say thank you both, I get the pleasure of running around the halls in Tallahassee with them a lot, and they're always so helpful to me when I have individual questions, or I'm looking at a bill, I'm like, what does this mean, what do you want me to do, how can I help? So from a personal perspective, I want to say, thank you, you guys are awesome. The FEFP, the .25 that they're allowed to increase every year for the expanded voucher program, and I'm going to call it a voucher, because that's what it is, I'm not going to call it the Family Empowerment Act, do we have any idea what that would mean for Orange County, or for the state as a whole, like in numbers-wise, like how many students would that account for? It's .25%, I guess, of all school students?
Correct, of all, the entire enrollment of public school students in the state of Florida. So, I don't know what that number is, but I can get it for you.
It's probably like what, I mean, it's going to be, so I guess my point is, is that point, even though it's .25, we're talking about a huge increase in dollars year to year.
Okay.
The other thing is, the opportunity zones, how many opportunity zones do we currently have in Orange County, and how will we be impacted by that? Because according to this bill, these opportunity zones, the school board doesn't have any authority or say over if a charter school comes in, correct?
Correct.
So how many of those opportunity zones do we have, do we know?
From getting the information, we have over 15, so, yeah, but we can get you a little bit more on it, we can get you the Excel spreadsheet that has that information on there, and what schools can possibly affect.
So just to clarify, for those who may be listening that may not understand what that means, that means in 15 of our areas, we could have A, B, or C schools, and because they're in opportunity zones, we could have excellent schools in those areas, and a charter school could come in, plant, set up, and the school board has no authority or say over it whatsoever, is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. All right, and then I think, a member, Castro Dental, asked this about the consecutive years, that's for teachers and principals, right, they have to stay at the same school in order to get that bonus?
That's correct.
And then, just a few more.
Go ahead.
The CTE, I had a question, I love the pathway bills, thank you guys for all that you worked, that you did on that. Since we are creating a different pathway, what designation will those students get on their diploma? Because right now, we have three different, we have like the scholar, the merit, and then the traditional diploma, the stickers, that designation, so what, do we know what designation those CTE students would get, and what is the possibility of us getting those designations removed? Because I really don't like them.
It doesn't, it didn't, from my understanding, and from Eileen's and Scott's, it didn't have any, it didn't call for the designation.
So they wouldn't get any sticker on their diploma?
I don't think they'll get any sticker, but I can double-check.
So maybe that would be, State Board of Education would have to develop that rule? Okay, I was just curious about that. And then the financial literacy course that's now required as elective, it's required for us to offer it, but it's not required for the students to take it, correct?
That's correct.
That's correct.
Perfect. And then, for the charter schools under 7030, what is the role of the school board? Like, I know that we can't prevent them from getting, or using the guardian program, but that doesn't fall under our authority to approve them using it, correct? That's under their own governing board, and we have no say to that?
That's correct. Our responsibility is, I'm sorry, our responsibility is just to facilitate those conversations.
Okay, and that's our only, perfect, thank you. And then, under the data gathering under 7030 for the student data, there's been a lot of other organizations that are unhappy, they feel like that that is a data privacy issue, do you think there'll be a lawsuit filed against 7030, not only for the inconstitutionality of requiring teachers to be armed, but for the data gathering piece?
I'll turn this over to Mr. Rodriguez for an answer.
I mean, I don't know who's going to lead that charge, Board Member Gallo, I mean, that's the real question, is who's going to step up? We've got a target on our back already as it is.
Oh, I'm, just to be clear, I, yeah, I don't want to touch that one, I was just wondering if they knew, because I have heard of, like, Southern property law has been discussing it, and I just didn't know if they had.
I think the biggest, the biggest issue for board members to remember, that is really the game changer since two years ago even, and really from this past November, is the complete overhaul of the Supreme Court. So with a Supreme Court that now has six Republican appointed justices, not to say that Republican justices won't view things differently, the reality is, it is very unlikely that you will see a lot of legislation be overturned on its constitutionality. It just, it seems to me like that would be an unlikely scenario, so you're taking a huge legal gamble, as it is, to spend a lot of time and energy, and again, put a big target on whoever challenges back. Now, some others will challenge it, I'm sure they will seek that kind of resolution, but at least at the state court level, it's going to be a difficult uphill climb to find things unconstitutional with this current Supreme Court.
Thank you.
And if any justices are listening, I do think they're fair and impartial.
Thank you for that. And then my very last question is about the drills, and the age-appropriateness of those drills, are they going to come out with any guidelines or rules that we want to follow? When these drills are basically, whose jurisdiction does that, will that fall under, in the district to make sure that those drills are age-appropriate?
So we have to have a school safety specialist appointed for the district, and we have one, and we would be getting direction on those drills from the Office of Safe Schools, that's another element that they have, that they have, another responsibility.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Member Lopez.
Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you as well for educating us, and for keeping us updated. I have a few questions, not that much. So, in the 7030, it says in Slide Number 8, enhances the duties of the commissioner, I would like to know how it's going to be that enhancement, because, you know, there is, and the next one said, the commissioner must facilitate compliance, identify non-compliance, and impose, or recommend, impose, that word is kind of scary, or recommend sanctions the under law. Can you explain a little bit more?
Yes, so under this legislation, the commissioner's authority has been expanded, so that the commissioner has to ensure that we're complying with school safety regulations. When the commission reported to the legislature, there was some testimony that they gave, where they said that there were several districts that were not in compliance with the act, and were dragging their feet, and all kinds of stuff. This is a, this is in direct response to that. So they claimed that there was no enforcement mechanism for the, for the bill that was passed last year, and so this is the response, is to put an enforcement mechanism, and give that authority to the commissioner. So what would happen is, if you had a district that was not in compliance with some kind of provision in the School Safety Act, the Office of Safe Schools is the entity that's responsible for overseeing that compliance, and then if it's not, they're not in compliance, they report that information to the commissioner. The commissioner then takes that information, and then the commissioner will report it to the appropriate folks, under the bill, and then those sanctions would come down from that, from there.
The imposition is because they can make decisions on our behalf?
So the imposition would be, for instance, you have, you may have the, you know, an entity that gets fined, and the commissioner would be responsible for making sure to collect that fine, for instance?
Do they have any type of saying on arming the teachers, or not?
Right now, no, that's a complete decision that's left up to your discretion.
Thank you. I have another, one other comment. On teacher certification, I feel very happy when I heard that, I think that that is going to help us in retaining good teachers, and also in recruitment. I remember more than 16 years ago, I have that situation, that I have to work as a substitute for one year until I pass the test, so it was kind of, yes, because of salary and all that stuff, but now that we have that, thanks to you and Cody for advocating for this, I think this is going to be amazing for our teachers. And the 7071, that celebrates academic and workforce achievements, I think that we are very ahead on that, and I feel so proud of all CPS, because we always try to celebrate our students' achievements, employed achievements, and, you know, all of our community achievements as well. So, thank you so much for keeping us updated.
Okay, that concludes all comments that we have at this point, and I think in order to keep us on schedule, we probably want to move on. I do want to thank, again, Cody, obviously Scott, you do a phenomenal job of oversight, but Cody and Eileen, the time you spent in Tallahassee, it's not a place many of us want to spend a whole lot of time, it's hard work, and, but you've done a phenomenal job, and everything that we hear is so positive about your credibility and your integrity, and that is, I think, the most important thing that a lobbyist can have, and often, not that you're lobbyists, but you do the work of a lobbyist on our behalf, and that's something that is often rarely lacking, and extremely valuable, so thank you. Okay, we're going to move on, and Dr. Jenkins, I'll turn to you for our policies.
We have several policies to cover. Madam Chair, I believe, I don't see any members of the public available, but I believe our parliamentarian prefers, because they're all not generally related, that you do pause between each to ask if there are any, if there's any public input, and then board discussion on each. So, we have the order here, I'm assuming we're going in. EDB, Maintenance and Control of Materials and Equipment, Ms. Gilbert. Followed by Alternative School Education Program, so we'll get in queue, so we can move quickly, and then School Board Facilities.
And you recognize, as soon as you're ready.
We've been, I'm working under the assumption it's on, oh, there it is, you just have to be very close.
Yes, okay, so the EDB, Maintenance and Control of Materials and Equipment has been changed, because the kitchen equipment now belongs to the Food Service Program, so we have the summary of the revisions that have been made to the existing policy, to include the content formatting, terminology, and the other edits. The Maintenance and Control of the Materials and Equipment, it used to be up through, reporting up through the principal, now the food service manager reports to the Food Service Program. So the use of the food service refrigeration equipment is clarified, so that refrigeration equipment shall be used only for storage and preservation of food in the following federal programs, breakfast, lunch, snack, and supper. Refrigeration equipment may also be used for school activities endorsed by the principal, when approved by the FNF School-Based Assignment Manager. Next, the Director of the School Food Service Program can authorize the removal of equipment from one kitchen to another kitchen throughout the district.
Is that, I'm sorry, is that the end of that presentation?
Yeah.
I am so sorry, it was like, okay, I apologize, it was short, and I thought maybe you guys were filling in next. Let's just make sure that we don't have any members of the public that wish to comment before we take a board discussion, doesn't appear that we do. Any board members have any input? All right, we'll move on, thank you.
Thank you, good afternoon, members of the board, John Pomerini and Dr. Chris Bernier, this is IHBH, our Alternative School Education Program, but as we have talked with many of you, this is an entire rewrite of our charter school policy, it has been since March of 2010, since we have revised this policy, and Dr. Bernier and his staff have done a great job administering the program, and coming up with procedures that we implement with respect to our charter school application process, our charter school approval process, the review of charter schools and their operation, closure and termination. So what we wanted to do is update our policy to encompass things that we are already doing as is, so that is a complete rewrite of this policy. So that is a complete rewrite of this policy. And I just want to hit some of the highlights that we have here. With respect to the updated application language, as you know, we have to use the Model Application Instrument under Florida law, that is a requirement that we start off with that draft. We also have OCPS application requirements. These are things like they have to provide us, I think it's 20 actual copies of the application, so we can give them to you all, and so we can also farm them out to our departments so they can give us expert review of the various sections, curriculum, finance, facilities, that kind of, those issues. Also, things that we added in in this section with respect to the review of applications, we put in a provision that comes straight out of case law. It's a case out of the Fourth DCA in 2007 that says, "The School Board has the ability by policy to adopt a policy which says, for existing operators of charter schools, if they come wanting to get open a new location within the district, we can require exemplary academic performance, and exemplary academic performance is defined as grades no lower than B." That comes straight out of case law from the Fourth DCA, so we are putting that in policy for you all tonight. So we have done that in the past, we have utilized past performance as a justification for turning down a school, but we wanted to ensconce it in policy, and we have the case law basis to do it. Also, with respect to the application review process, as you all know, the charter school meets with Dr. Bernier's team, and then they have a work session with you where you ask them questions. What we are doing is adding language that says, "We want the members of the governing board to be up in this table answering questions, because we want to make sure that the governing boards can conduct oversight over the management company. We want them to be able to manage that management company, not have the management company, quite frankly, manage the governing board." So we think subjecting them to your questions would show whether or not they have the oversight capacity as they're required to have by law. We are also updating the contract negotiation processes. We currently didn't have one, but in the, in the contract negotiation process, we are saying, we are putting in a rule that says, "You have 30 days," I think I may be reversing this, "you have 30 days to give the school a proposed contract when you approve the application, and then another 40 days to negotiate." We are putting in the policy that if they blow past that 70-day period where we don't enter into a contract, that the approval of the application that you all have given will automatically be rescinded because they have not entered into a contract in a timely fashion as required by Florida law. Now, with respect to the renewal process, we are putting in provisions that says what they are already doing. We're going to look at the success of the current academic program, we're going to see in the charter contract, they list their goals and objectives, we're going to see if they've actually met their goals and objectives, and we are going to look at the viability of the not-for-profit entity that's operating the charter school. So the governing board creates a not-for-profit entity, we're going to make sure that's financially viable, it's not, not paying its bills, I'm sorry for the double negative, but it's past 6 o'clock and English is failing me, we're going to make sure they're paying their bills, they're not, they don't owe vendors anything, and we're going to ensure that when we renew them, that they are financially meeting the mark. With respect to the amendment process, we didn't actually have an amendment process within the policy. What we've said is we're going to, when considering amendments, we're going to ensure that the charter school can demonstrate success again in the current academic program, that they are, whether they're meeting the goals and objectives in the charter contract itself, and once again, whether the entity, the not-for-profit entity is viable. If those things aren't being met, we're not going to allow a charter school to amend the contract, we're going to say you need to fix your current existing program before we can entertain any amendments. Also, in their, in that, in the charter amendment process, we are also talking about things that, with respect to education program changes. So say a school comes to us and say, "We want to change our curriculum, we want to change the grade levels." What we've required in the past is that they submit a revised application to go through the approval process with you all. We're just formalizing that in policy. If they want to change the, especially grade levels, that is something you all should be able to consider, whether or not the curriculum is there to allow a grade change, and whether or not they have an ability to teach that. Think, you know, you have a K through 5, and now they want to expand to grade 6 through 8. We want to make sure that they have the capacity to teach middle schoolers, because teaching middle school is different than teaching elementary school, so that's in the policy as well. With respect to relocation, if a school wants to relocate, our policy says, "Look, we're going to, you're going to have to prove to us that you have considered the financial implications, you've considered the feasibility, and that student access issues have been addressed." So for example, if you're proposing to move all the way across town, and your student body is not going to be able to uproot itself and go all the way across town to go to the new location, that might be something we would consider when deciding whether or not to allow an amendment. So they're going to have to address all those issues if they're changing location. All right, charter termination and non-renewal process. Obviously, when we have, there are state law provisions that deal with termination and non-renewal of charter schools, there's a certain amount of notice we have to give, I believe it's 90 days under the statute, if we're deciding to non-renew a school. But there are certain things that we are, want to have administratively, so we can do things like secure publicly financed fixtures, furniture, property. So what we're requiring, if we're non-renewing or terminating them, they have to provide access to their administrative, operational, and financial records to school choice upon notification of us, to us, that they are going to close or terminate. We're also going to require the charter schools notify the appropriate school board staff, which will again be school choice, so they can, so school choice can make sure that we are able to secure unencumbered public funds, furniture, fixtures, and equipment purchased with public money, because under the statute, those things purchased with public money are supposed to revert back to the school district upon the closure or non-renewal of a charter school. Dr. Bernier and his staff already go out there, and they tag equipment that has been purchased with public money, so we know where that stuff is in those buildings, but we are formalizing in policy that, yes, they have to let us know so we can go recoup those publicly financed, you know, equipment, furniture, so, upon closure or non-renewal. Dispute resolution language, our current policy says, didn't have dispute resolution program, dispute resolution language, the policy will now say, "Hey, if you have a dispute with your parent or your student, you have to set up a process by which you resolve that dispute internally with your school staff, not bringing it to us. If you have a dispute with an employee, you have to set up a dispute resolution process, not including us. If you have a problem with a vendor, you solve the problem with the vendor, but don't include us. You have to have that dispute resolution process." And I believe that it's addressed in the charter contracts that they have to have dispute resolution processes in place, but we wanted to ensure that that is in the charter contract, or that's in our policy as well. With respect to monitoring charter schools for statutory compliance, we have a whole host of sections that we are adding to the policy, and I just want to touch on some of those very briefly. Management company contracts, we are going to require that charter schools bring their management company contracts or amendments thereto to us for review. That doesn't mean we can turn them down necessarily, but we can look at them and say, "Hey, there is some provisions in here that are problematic. In our experience, we've seen other charter entities get into problems with those. You might want to thinking about changing this, this provision of the contract from X to Y." One place where we are going to insist on an inclusion in a management company contract is we're going to ask them to include a provision that allows them to terminate a management company contract with 30 days' notice without cause, because what we don't want to have happen is a charter school gets bound, and some of you have seen some of these charter contracts, where the contract with the management company is so onerous on the termination provisions that it almost usurps the charter school's ability to get out of that contract. Provisions like, "Hey, if you terminate us, it can only be for cause, and if it's not for cause, we will accelerate everything due and owing under the remainder of the contract to be payable immediately upon the termination." Well, a charter school governing board may say, "That's a lot of money that we don't have to pay that." So if they don't have a provision in their contract that says, "We can get out without cause in 30 days," they could be stuck at the mercy of their management company. So we want to have a provision in our standard, in their contracts to say, "30 days, no cause, we can get out of a management contract." So that's part of the policy there. Charter school, Code of Conduct, you see up there. Most schools, in fact, all of our charter schools utilize our Code of Conduct because it's easier not to recreate the wheel. They have access to our administrators for disciplinary team meetings, they have access to our hearing officers for due process hearings on their Code of Conduct. We say, "We'll allow you to create your own, but it will require our approval." We don't anticipate that we're going to see many schools attempt to do that, but if they do, it allows them by policy to adopt their own Code of Conduct upon our approval. We also put in a provision, some of you are familiar with, the parent contracts that many of these schools have, where, you know, the parents of the students have to, you know, do various things, include volunteer hours or anything like that. In the past, we have seen schools say, "If a parent doesn't comply with the volunteer hours, we are going to remove the student's continuing ability to go to the school." We have had those instances in the past, we have very gently and politely talked with those charter entities, and we said, "You really don't have the authority to do that," and they'd say, "Oh, you're right, we're going to allow the student to continue to do that." But we're putting this in our policy, just so everybody can be clear, that we're not going to allow students to be removed from a charter school because mom and dad didn't volunteer for 20 hours. We don't think that's equitable, and quite frankly, we don't think the law would allow it. We're adding a section that allows you as school board members, the superintendent, and Dr. Bernier and his staff to go on a charter school campus at will whenever they want, not, "Hey, you can come back in a week from now." We're going to make clear that we are going to have access to those campuses whenever we see fit. It's part of our role as the sponsor to conduct oversight, so we want to make sure that you guys have access to those campuses. We are adding provisions that, what we already do, if a school falls below a C grade, we require a school improvement plan. We have formalized that in policy, that they are going to have to be required to submit a school improvement plan. Financial oversight, we are going to require by policy that they submit their tax return documents, including IRS Form 990 that these not-for-profits file with the IRS, we're going to ask for those yearly, we're going to ask for them to submit, to submit audited and unaudited financial statements. We're putting in a provision, we already do this, but this says the school board has the right to review and audit those financial records. Dr. Bernier and his staff has done that before. And we are also putting in a provision that if a school hits a financial emergency, you know that provision that says if not 3%, if you don't have 3% of your budget in reserves, that you could be in a financial emergency where the state has to, could come in and oversee or take you over, depending on how severe the financial emergency is. If they go into financial emergency, they're going to have to provide that information to us, and they're going to have to provide their remediation plan to us, so we can be sure that they have a plan to get out of a financial emergency. We have had charter schools get into financial situations in the past, those have been, those charter schools have been sent letters that say, "If you don't remedy this, we could institute 90-day closure procedures." And those charter schools seem to get that financial house in order when we send that letter saying closure proceedings could be coming, but we wanted to formalize our ability to make sure that we have the ability to do that. And then finally, there is a provision for immediate termination under Florida law when health, safety, and welfare violations are going on. This policy would give the superintendent the authority when she or he, she sees that there is health, safety, welfare violations at a school, to go in and immediately decide that the school needs to be closed for health, safety, welfare violations. Under the policy, you all as the school board would then vote at the next meeting whether or not to affirm or reject her closure, and if you guys affirm the closure, under state law, we have to continue to operate the school during the pendency of any appeals. Obviously, the first order of business, if we have health, safety, welfare violations, we would go in there and remedy that, and then continue to operate the school, but this just codifies the immediate closure provisions. So that is, in a nutshell, the changes to the charter school policy. We stand ready to answer any questions the board may have.
Excellent presentation. Member Gould.
Thank you. I think many of those changes really will help to make it very clear the expectations of the school board on behalf of the taxpayers, but I think it also helps the charter schools to really understand their fiduciary responsibility a little bit more. Something that I would like to investigate, this may not be for tonight, but in a follow-up discussion, all of the charter schools, I think that are operating, the schools are not-for-profits, and the best practices for not-for-profits, and, and schools, some of our schools like UCP already do this, file an annual update with the Central Florida Foundation. So it gives another place where, as a not-for-profit organizations can, and, and community can go and look and see what the school about, it talks about what the mission is, what they do, how well they're doing, it's like a little mini-report scorecard, almost like a mini-annual report that the community could see. That would be something I'd like us to look into, to see if that may be a best practice we could ask them to adopt, and especially for new boards that are formulating, that may know a lot about education and not so much about not-for-profit, it's a great resource as well for them.
Thank you, Member Gould. Next, we have Member Kesterdenel.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I have to agree that the information you provided and the updates are very thorough, and I appreciate that, the work you've put into that. I think we benefit from the board having learned from experience and some of these policies that you've updated. And I agree with Member Gould that this will help to benefit the taxpayers, to make sure that we're providing the most rigorous oversight, that it is allowed by statute. And I appreciate the language that informs parents and vendors and students and employees of the dispute resolution process, because just the time that I've been on the board, I mean, I'm aware of, of parents and other people who have come to us saying, "There's a problem, we need you to solve it," and we've had to say, "That's not our purview," and we've had to direct them back. So I think stating that information upfront is helpful as well. And informing the parents also of their rights as to the so-called mandatory volunteer hours is important. Informed choice is always better than just any choice, so I think it's important that these, our policies help to inform parents in their choices. And I think it's also helps the public understand that we are not singling out charter schools, we are just trying to apply the same fair oversight that we're allowed, and just like we can, any board member can go unannounced to any of our traditional public schools, it's only fair that we have that same access as well to go into a charter school. So thank you for bringing those clarifications and updating that language, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Next, Vice Chair Gordon.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I really thank you for the thought report, but most of all, I thank you for meeting with each of us and going over these and allowing us to, you know, give a little input into it, but both of you have done a remarkable job, all three of you, and working with the, working with this charter school. I think it will do an awful lot for the board, give us credibility, but yet not give us authority. We must remain, we don't want to manage them, they have their own school board, we only want to make sure, since we are the keeper and the guardian, to see if they are following state laws, we're the only one. I've often said, I really wish, close then Dr. Bernier would go away someplace, Dr. Jenkins would have to place him, but I would hope that the state would take this over, and I want to see that they will not do as well. The reason why most of these charters are doing extremely well is because of the vision of our superintendent and seeing to it that we have an oversight team that work directly with them, they get to come to our events, they get to be trained with our staff, we would offer way more, we are there when they need us, when we here, and the majority of our schools, and I've been through those closing of those charter schools, the majority of them, because we hear from the public. The public, John Q. Public tells us first, and then we come and we tell Dr. Bernie, and then he tells Dr. Jenkins, and we begin to look into it, and we thank God for the students. then he tells Dr. Jenkins and we begin to look into it and we thank God for the students because they're our biggest advocates. So there should be something in there, you know, that students should be free and parents should be free to share with this school board because look at one charter we had to come in here and they knew they were doing bad, but for convenience, those parents wanted to keep that charter. I'm really happy to know that we will be able to secure the materials and supplies back from the taxpayers because that has been extremely important. But I am at the point where the talent that we have working on this, that talent, Dr. Jenkins, could be utilized in helping us with all the wonderful programs that you've created with your team. And the state needs to take charge of that because when it all boils down, we do not say if they stay or go, even once we showed where they have violated. There's that little God Committee up in Tallahassee that makes the decision to tell us regardless of what we show them, that they can stay. So I do believe we have to go back. I'm sorry that Cody and Scott and Eileen left because they really need to work on that. We need a little bit more power there because they have the authority to go against us and they have in the past on some things and they allow these schools that are not doing well to thrive and just go on and move on. And then the parents come in here, you know, begging us not to close the school even though we don't have that power to close them. But I do would like, Ms. Madam Chair, if we could task the superintendent to find out how we can get a little bit more gap on it with all these policies to let the state see and that these proposals that you're making to us today, that these proposals be sent to the state charter committee and ask them to consider these. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Thank you. So following up on that, I'm assuming that you have put in everything that you think that you can legally put into these policies. Okay, so a couple of things that, for instance, the adding in the exemplary performance for new applications, I wasn't aware that that's something you were already doing, but question for you, can we use that for renewals and amendments as well or can we only use that for new applications?
We can attempt to utilize it for all of it. The case that I was referencing, it's called M. Hotep versus Department of Education, it was out of Palm Beach County. That case arose solely in the context of consideration of an application. It did not arise in the case of non-renewals or closing of charters, but it's still the same type of analysis that would go into it. Are they meeting their academic goals? Like if we have a school that is falling well short of the stated academic goals in the charter, that would be just, or that would be good cause, sorry, let me try that again, that would be good cause under the statute to close them for failing to meet the academic goals and standards in the charter school. So the same principle applies, but it's sort of a different way of getting there.
So it would seem from a legal standpoint that including that in amendments would be an easier hurdle to get to than renewals because they're actually asking for a change, which is closer to new than a renewal. Would that, does that make sense?
I can't speak to the case law, but to your question, we're already taking some of the information that's utilized within that case law and bringing it to both processes. Because what we don't want to bring before you is an organization that has not met renewal standards. And I've shared with some of you, not all, remember, we have a pretty rigorous renewal process. It's a lot like a Saks accreditation. It's a multiple visit, visiting with parents, separate of the governing board, students separate of the governing board, using high-performing charter operators to help us who have also been very instrumental in recommending to us, this charter school should not be renewed. And it's really fabulous when you start to get their community to police themselves. So we are applying that very high rigorous standard in that. I think the place where we have to look at it even more, and we'll certainly take that point back, is with amendments. I think in amendments, when some people just want to move, you know, across the street, it doesn't seem like that big of a deal, but it is another opportunity for us to review everything about them in order before we say, we'll bring a recommendation forward from the superintendent.
Okay, so, and because that language just jumped out, that exemplary language kind of jumped off the page at me, I didn't see that same thing in the renewal process and maybe it's there, I'm just going back and look. Just take a look at that and see if there's anything that we need to do to enhance that language to make it consistent with what you're doing. And like I said, it might be there and it just might have been said a little more subtly and so it didn't occur to me. But of course, I don't want us to do anything that we end up in a lawsuit over. That's just not worth it.
I purposely limited the usage of the word exemplary to the one context in which the court.
You knew it was so defensible. Thank you. I appreciate that. I appreciate that attention to that. All right, the second thing, you, I was also happy with the provision and I think it's under the, when they're shutting down, it's under Section 12B Roman Numbo 5 about the furniture equipment that the vice chair just referenced. One question I had was enforceability, so I can see how we can enforce other things, but since they're closing, what's the, what is the enforcement on that?
Practicality of that has gotten better and better with everyone. There was an incident a long time ago within Orange County where a charter school was being closed down prior to my involvement with them and there was a robbery over the weekend. Once we know we're moving on, once we know we're moving on a closure of a school building, we alert our site security even long before we had our own police department. They then watch the building. They have no right to be on the property because it's private property. Local law enforcement, whether it be a small municipality or something as large as the Orange County Sheriff's Office has made aware, and that building is watched. If someone starts to make movement there, we have the ability. And we've had no trouble in my tenure securing all of the public materials back to this district and getting into our surplus.
I am so proud to hear that. I am so proud to hear that. I have flashbacks to Sanford-Burnham, unfortunately. And so I figure if that can happen at Sanford-Burnham, it can happen at one of our charter schools. So, next and last question, one of the things that we tried to get through and we were optimistic, I don't think we made it through legislature, but we were trying to get what I would call a parent's bill of rights or informed choice provision in there that would inform parents, that would require that charter schools produce something, a manual, if you will, that says to new considering parents, if there are, the percentage of teachers that are certified, some financial and academic information upfront. And most importantly, I think, I think to me anyway, was the idea that if there are expectations, uniforms, dress codes, that parents need to be aware of beforehand that might render their kids not comfortable in that environment, that the parents should be informed. Whether or not they offer ESOL classes, yes, ELL classes, what services do they provide so that parents with special needs don't inadvertently stumble into an environment where they think their children are going to be adequately prepared for. We tried to get all those things in. It wouldn't be a requirement that they have things, it would just be a requirement that parents were informed when they made that decision. Is that something, if it's not in statute, which I don't think it made it, is it something we can put in policy?
There are various facets that, you know, for example, financial reporting stuff, they have to post their audited financials on their website by state law. They have a parental involvement liaison, especially for the big, bigger, larger operators where people, parents or potential parents can go and talk to those folks and say, you know, hey, what is this going to mean for my child enrollment? What are the requirements? So there's some of that that's already existing. With respect to whether or not we could do something similar to that, I would have to take a look at the law, quite frankly, because, you know, there are the provisions that say we can't limit the intended flexibility that's provided to charters under the state law. So I would have to look at that statutory language to give you a definitive answer on that, but some of that stuff is already ensconced in certain provisions of the law where they are getting some information. And I think when you all get questions from parents about what's going on at that charter school, I think one of the things you should tell them is there is a parental involvement liaison at many campuses. See if your campus has it. So that would be their point of contact for them to go talk with that parental liaison. If not, obviously you can refer them to the governing board. But Dr. Bernier, if you want to add anything?
You can also refer them to school choice, which you're all excellent at doing. And I mean that sincerely. I mean, it sounds like I'm complaining about the phone call or the email. That's what we're there for. We're there to sit and explain and explain to a parent, they have joined an independent public school building. But to the point the chairman is making on our website, and it probably needs some revisment about, based upon some of the things you told me, so I'll go back and take a look at it. We started working a number of years ago on informed choice that, and I always use the adage when a parent calls me and said, what do you mean by that? You should go visit a school. You should see whether you can have access to be toured. Can you pop into a classroom not without somebody walking with you because there's Jesse Longford and some other rules? Do you have access to the principal? Are they willing to meet with you? What about transportation? What about a school resource officer? There were a number of questions and I hate to say it personally, but I mirrored it against, when my daughter was choosing colleges, she wasn't going anywhere that I didn't get a chance to see. I mean, and there was going to be a feeling about it and she still had her choice when it came down to it. But I wanted to also be comfortable as her dad and a parent, whether they're choosing kindergarten, 5th grade, 8th grade, or a high school or collegiate opportunity, they really need to be comfortable with where their child is going. We've been encouraging that and we're getting more and more and more feedback related to it. Finally, last thing I would add is, under public records request, I'm sure our attorney would say that, I have no trouble making a request of our charters to see what their parent handbooks look like.
Thank you. And that was my last question was the issue of sunshine and producing public records. So when we have a charter school that won't produce public records, we have the ability to demand those records. And perhaps an avenue here would be for us to enhance our own website dealing with all of our specific charter schools. We can talk about that. It wouldn't require a policy change, that would be an administrative component that we could look at.
To your note, Chair, I was informed earlier this afternoon, late this afternoon, that the link to all of our charter schools has been taken down. We've already restored a minimal level of service back to that and my webmaster in my department is already putting it back. I was sharing with Dr. Williams, that information has always been on our website, but there was some snafu in our link that led to the charter's individual sites. We were unaware, but it's already been rectified and will be, continue to be rectified by tomorrow morning.
Thank you. And obviously, the issue that we recently learned about with Orlando Science Charter and the fact that they had not reported a very serious allegation while they were coming through the process of applying for a new application, I am assuming, and this has come up since this policy has been rewritten, if there's any amendments that we can or should make as a result of whatever you come across, you'll take that into consideration and bring that forward. Thank you. Yes?
Just speak to that because I'm not sure, you had sent a memo to our office yesterday and this is the first time the board has met in public, so there was a report recently about an employee that had been, had resigned at Orlando at one of our charter schools, I'll say. And that individual resigned in March, the allegation had taken place, I think, earlier in the month, but they were one of the ones that just recently was before this board for approval of a new school. So during that entire period of time, nothing was shared with us or reported to us about the allegations regarding that employee. As it turned out, you all approved it after one board meeting delay, I think it was. And so we're now looking for answers because the reality is, is obviously they may have delayed that information, but more importantly, when an allegation is serious as the one that was brought up and then the individual was later charged criminally, that should have been reported to DCF immediately. I'm not aware of whether they are or not and the news media seems to think that they weren't. We're going to get to the bottom of it. I did get the chair's memo and I've got a draft letter sitting on my computer right now as I'm reviewing to get that to the charter school to demand any records as well as their policies and procedures with regards to reporting. If they failed to comply, then we will have to explore that as a board and figure out what you all want to do with that. But it is a concern, obviously, and it's made the news media yesterday because they've become aware of it as well. Channel 9 was the first reporting on it. So if there's any questions on that, please see me afterwards, doesn't impact this policy directly. I'm sure you can write that into the policy, but reporting is a state requirement to DCF, so we don't need to add that to the list of things they need to comply with.
Just very briefly to that, in the standard charter contract, of course, compliance with law is something that they are required to do. So any statutory provision of Florida law that is directly applicable to them, public records is certainly directly made applicable by statute. And then, you know, with respect to reporting child abuse, anybody that works in a public school setting, whether it's charter or public, is required to report suspected child abuse, neglect, or endangerment by statute. So they have to comply with those statutory provisions.
Yes, obviously, we shouldn't have to rewrite the statute. My only thought, well, my thought is rather vague, that there may be things that we learn as a result of this in a quick period of time that could change that, including what we expect for a renewal in terms of reporting to us so that we're not having to rely on the media to discover that something went unreported to DCF allegedly. So anyway, I'm looking forward to, you know, your expertise on this, if there's anything else that brings a light. And then we have Vice Chair Gordon and that may close us out.
All righty, thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to see and I would like to ask, Madam Chair and to my fellow board members, along with Dr. Jenkins and definitely the legal department, as Dr. Bernie has spoke, you know, I'm not comfortable with, because we have no jurisdiction. Our authority is what we see and hear. We report it directly to the superintendent, the general counsel, and there are times we call and you have to write things down on your hand. He knows what I'm talking about, a thousand things at that time. But those were the process and I think that that keeps us safe. But for me to tell a parent, you have a legal parent, you know, advisor, how about we add a clause in there, this proposal, that our legal department, since we are over and the school choice department, do a presentation to their governing board because this is something we never see. We never get to see the parents on the governing board. We never see the parent. All we see is one or two, one on that end, one on that end, and maybe one in the middle, the managing companies. And they come from out of state. It used to be a clause that we really went strong on and some kind of way that clause got pulled, they had to bring in. They couldn't even put together a charter school without legal. But Madam Chair and board members and superintendent, I would like for us legally, we don't need to be telling them to go look because what if it didn't happen? They're going to come back and say, well, you overseeing this, why didn't you do something about it? But I think general counsel, the general counsel, along with his legal team and Mr. Bernie and the superintendent, Madam Chair and board members could get together and bring another clause back in that require that you let them know, because we never have notified, look at all the schools that, in my district, look what happened to them. I mean, you know, it was just sad and the parents and the students were the ones hurting. So you've got to have a legal clause in there that you could give a one-time workshop or when they apply, that governing board has to come in. They don't have to come before us, they can come before school choice. And then you give a legal seminar on the parents' right because we could at least do that for them. Because it's not being done, we cannot verbally go and tell them to go look for that parent liaison. That is so wrong, we have nothing to do with their business as far as how they govern in that aspect because we don't know who it is unless we're going to hand them the name, you know, with the person on it, and I think that's out of play. But if we train the trainer on their team, it is there, we can do a memorandum of understanding that this information must be passed on to the parents within that school, that clears us to show that we told them to, and then every parent have a right to know, just like we are giving our parents a right to know, that they got to sign that code of student conduct some kind of way, all right? That should be brought. So I'm asking Dr. Jenkins, through the chair and the board members, if this is something feasible that you think we could do and add it to this clause before we close out this piece today. And that's general counsel also.
I'm not sure we can require them. I think it's good government.
No, I'm not saying add. No, I'm not saying add today, but I'm saying we're not requiring it. It is a courtesy.
Yeah, I think we could offer a training. I think it's a good idea.
Yes, that's what I'm talking about.
Mr. Palmarene is the expert in charter schools. And I think the months of July and June, he's off on Fridays, so.
Knowing Mr. Palmarene, the way I know Mr. Palmarene, he'll get it done.
I would join him in training. We would, we'll figure out a way to offer this to our charter school governing boards.
Figure out a way to be courteous and to inform those parents that do not know, because that's where the problem is. They have no major communication with their major board. You're, I don't want to say major board, but you know what I'm talking about. That parent communication, it does not appear before this board as our parent communication appears before this board.
So Ms. Gordon?
And it should be the same, because they are public schools governed by the constitution of the state of Florida.
One other comment on that, just to piggyback on that idea. I think it is a good idea to suggest that to them, because in the example we just gave, if it turns out that board did not report, or the principal did not report, and the board was notified, those board members are subject to liability. And whether they know it or not, they will be perhaps personally liable, whether it's civil or criminal, for their failure to report. So I think there are probably some components of charter school law that Mr. Palmarene and I can look at to see that would make sense. We can offer it, again, I don't think we can legally require, we can offer it, and then see what the participation rate is. And it may be something that's offered periodically by our office as a service. There's certainly ethics and other things that could be included. So we'll see how we provide that service.
All right. Well, I thank my board members for, if they want to chime in on that, or whatever, I thank the chair, definitely Superintendent Jenkins, because she was over there nodding her head, and to the general counsel, and to the general counsel staff sitting there, and the man who runs the choice program. I rest my case.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice Chair. And let me just double-check and make sure that we still have no one in the room at this point that wishes to speak to this issue. And we're going to move on then to our next policy, Policy KF, Public Use of School Board Facilities. Dr. Jenkins?
Absolutely. I think Laura Kelly is up next. I want to get everyone in queue. We have four more policies and then the Code of Conduct. Let me also mention, yeah, I thought you might want to know there are four, and then the code. And they moved some of those refreshments to the back room in case you need to take a break as well. All right, Ms. Kelly?
Good evening. I'm actually here to present two different policies today. The first one is Policy KF. This policy is for the public's use of our school board facilities. Where we see this is our short-term use agreements that you see on a scheduled basis. Think something like the little league coming in to use the fields, or a church, or a dance recital using our auditorium. So what we're doing today is we're revising the policy in response to an audit findings that we actually received a couple of years ago. But what we're doing also is revising some of the statutory language, just to make it consistent with what's in Florida statute now. So the first revision that you're going to see in the policy is regarding the designation of authority. Previously, it was, the authority was designated to the principals and the building administrator to approve these facility use agreements. We don't have anyone who's even designating as a building administrator anymore, so it just wasn't relevant. So what we ended up doing is we took that authority, and we said it could be designated to your principal, your chief facilities officer, and their designees. We were seeing what was happening at the schools. A lot of times, the principal may be delegating it to their assistant principal or someone else on their staff. So we wanted to make sure that they had that flexibility, so these facility use agreements were getting approved in a timely manner. So the second area that we're revising is the risk management requirements, and this was in response to a request from our risk management department. The current requirements that were in the policy were actually outdated, so what they wanted us to do is go ahead and just say, you know, just refer to risk management for what the updated requirements are. It was just a simple change in that language. The, sorry. The third revision was to allow our cabinet members to reduce and waive fees. In practice, what we saw in our audit was that fees were being waived. A lot of times, they were being waived for nonprofits, or, you know, the insurance requirement may be waived for like, you know, two people or something that were congregating in the parking lot for, you know, getting ready for a parade, or something like that. So what we ended up doing is we allowed that to be recognized in our policy, because before it wasn't. So audit said, "Well, you know, this is being allowed, but it's not actually allowed." So we were just memorializing that in our policy, and we delegated it to our cabinet members, so that we ensured that there was consistency across the board. And then the last area that we're revising in this policy was the inclusion of the cancellation of events and collections. What we saw is that some of our organizations, they're supposed to pay in advance, but what would happen is the organization would show up, and whoever was there, whoever was the site supervisor, would let them in. Well, then we had to go back and try to collect those fees for them. So we ended up actually getting some entities that ended up being in arrears, a pretty significant amount. And there was an article about it in the newspaper at one point. So we wanted to make sure that we had the authority to send them to collections, but also to cancel events. So if this was an organization that used our services on a monthly basis, and they were two months behind, we had to have the ability to go ahead and cancel those events. So that's what we were just including in that policy. And those are all the revisions for Policy KF. So that one was a quick one.
Okay. Real quick, any members of the public wish to address the board? All right. Seeing none, any members of the board wish to address the board? All right, keep moving. Good job, Laura.
Keep going fast for you. Okay, so the next policy that we're talking about revising is Policy FEA. This is the one that sets forth the framework for our prototype reuse and our Phase 3 approvals. So we're bringing these revisions to the board today. It was really in response to what we heard at the facilities workshop a couple of months ago. So we wanted to make sure that everything was actually being memorialized in our policy. We took what you said, we did tweak some of the language, so I just want to kind of give you an advance warning there. The first area that we're revising in this policy is about that selection of the architects and the prototypes. So what we did is we ended up creating a framework where the prototype design is required if we have two school levels, two or more school levels in a five-year time period. So that's consistent with what the Florida statute says. So if we had two high schools, we have to use prototype design. Your first one's an initial, your second one is a reuse. And the whole intent behind that is so that you're achieving that cost savings on that second school that's in that five-year period. So we just wanted to make sure that we're being consistent with there, and we just, like I said, we just memorialize the statutory language in the policy. So what we ended up adding here is we said, once that requirement, once that five-year requirement is triggered, the district has one of two methods to use for a prototype. So the first method is what we use now. It's where we go out and we solicit for architects. And so what we say, okay, we're going to, we're soliciting for architects for an elementary school. And so we go through the solicitation process, and then three architects are chosen. They're not assigned to school at this point. That comes later. And so that's how the policy will continue to work. So what happens is those three architects are chosen for elementary, middle, K8s, and then for high school, we put two for the high schools in there in this policy. So what then happens is this is kind of the added input from the school board, is, you know, there was a concern about transparency about the committee. So what we said is, once we have that initial school, we have that elementary school that's coming in that five-year period, that first one and that second one, what we're going to do is we're going to go ahead and we're establishing a committee. This committee will be subject to the sunshine law. So they're going to have to advertise their meetings, they'll have to require, they'll have to keep minutes. And so what will happen is they're going to go ahead and prepare a report and a recommendation that will go to the school board. And so you guys will have the final say on the actual selection of that architect. And so what we ended up doing is we created two separate categories for this. First is the selection of the initial use. When that committee's going and looking at the different architects, you don't necessarily have a specific prototype. This is your first time you're using it. So you don't have the layout, you don't know how it's going to fit on the site, so you have very limited information. You just have, here's my three names. So in that, you're going to get a kind of a scaled-down report. You're really going to look at the volume of work on this one to make sure, you know, that that's suitable for them to be able to take on this additional school site. So then, the second time you come in, when you're coming in for a reuse, the committee will look at the additional factors. They'll take a look at, you know, the suitability of this site for that, or the suitability of each of the prototypes for that site. And they'll look at environmental factors, anything like that, your access points. So it'll be a much more detailed report, because they'll have the building, and they're going to be able to tell you whether or not this building can fit on that site. So you'll see that, it'll come to the board for approval. The, so one thing that, I'm sorry about that. So the selection process will occur five years before the school's scheduled. So if you have a school, if you have your, you know, like I said, your elementary schools, it'll occur five years before that. If you have a high school, I think right now, we have a high school in our CIP for 2026 or something like, if you have that, it would have, the selection would have to occur by 2021. And the whole purpose of the selection occurring in advance like that is so that it doesn't mess up your design schedule. You can just, once you have it selected, then you can go through your committee review process, and you can go through your design. Now, the second method, it's still subject to some of the same transparency issues. So what we ended up doing is we created a OCPS prototype. So the state currently has prototypes that we could essentially go and use right off the shelf. But what we're talking about doing is creating a prototype that is specific to OCPS. You're not going to necessarily see it in every other district, that what we're going to do is take the lessons learned from our district and say, "Okay, well, what works for us?" And so it'll go through the CCNA process, and we'll select an architect who will then design an elementary school prototype for us. It'll probably be a nine-month process just to be able to do that, and they'll take that through three phases of design, what's called program verification, schematic design, and developmental design. That's as far as it'll go, and then we'll essentially have it on the shelf for us to be able to use later. It's not site-specific at this point. So then, when we want to actually go and use it, if we want to use that specific design for an elementary school, we now say, "This is our design criteria. This is what you use. This goes back out to the CCNA process." So it's a solicitation for an architect who will come in and essentially finish out the design. They'll go ahead and take this building, this layout, and they'll put it on our site. They'll tell us where the access point should be, they'll tell us where all the amenities should be. But again, it's using the floor plans and everything that our team, our internal team, our stakeholders have bought into. So that's the second process that we're looking at. So then the second area that we're talking about, so for these prototypes, what we want is, you know, you have these two methods, and we're going out for the solicitations for it. Right now, we don't have any deadlines. Right now, we have, one of the concerns that we heard was about the high schools, about when that was solicited, when our high school prototype was adopted. So it was in 2007. So we initially had heard about maybe a five-year review or a 10-year review. So what we ended up doing is we putting a 10-year review in this. The reason being for that actually ties to kind of our middle schools. If you take a look at our middle schools, our middle schools were our middle schools and our K8s. The prototypes for those were actually selected in 2014. However, we are just now seeing those prototypes coming and opening up. We saw some that opened in 2017, and we see another one, which is one of the first reuse, opening up this year. So you're seeing it takes you a longer design process when you have an initial and then a reuse, and we want to make sure that we're capturing the cost savings associated with that reuse. So that's why we were recommending a 10-year review. And so what it allows you to do is it says, you have a 10-year review process, doesn't mean we're automatically going to solicit, but we're going to take it back to the board, and we're going to say, "What do you guys think? If we've only had three middle schools in 10 years, does it make sense for us to go ahead and solicit for new services if we haven't even reused every prototype yet?" And so that's really an analysis for the board to do, once we go through that 10 years and that 10-year solicitation. So we want to make sure that we're really achieving all the benefits of the prototype reuse program. So then the second area that, or the next area that we're revising in that policy has to do with the Facilities Condition Assessment Database. The policy previously just said, "Well, you have to make sure you're assessing these certain components." Well, we have something better now. We have the Facilities Condition Assessment Database. This is a living tool that tells us how our schools are actually functioning. Periodically, I think it's about every five years, we conduct the Facilities Condition Assessment. We are just undergoing it right now. It's about completed. And so they take all this information about the useful life of the building systems and components, and they enter it into this database. Then maintenance can kind of track it, and if they know the chillers at a school are always going out, always going out, they can identify it and connect that information with the database. So we just wanted to make sure that that policy is referring back to this real-time database that really provides much better information for us. And then finally, we're recommending that the language for Phase 3 approvals, we're recommending the delegation of that authority. The phase or approvals currently come to the board for approval. We're recommending that authority be delegated to our Building Code Compliance Office and our Fire Health and Safety as a school board's authorized review agent. So under Florida statutes, Sections 10, 13, 37, you guys, as the reviewing agent, as the one who is technically approving these, right now, you're supposed to be weighing 17 criteria. So you're supposed to be looking at these plans and saying, "Well, is it code compliant? Does it comply with the fire code? Does it comply with the building code?" And that's not necessarily something we would expect the board members to be able to do. That's why we have our experts. That's why we have the Building Code and Compliance Officers and Fire Health and Safety. So what we want to make sure is we're making sure we're using the delegation of authority consistent with the statutes, and so we're going to delegate the authority to BCCO and Fire Health and Safety. They can still subsequently, if you guys want, take this information back to the board as an informational item, if you did want to see it. But I just want to make sure that it kind of relieves you guys of liability from having to look for all those 17 criteria. So then, we did something a little new in this policy, is we added an effective date. So the reason for doing this was that we wanted to ensure that the prototypes, the solicitation process, applied to those schools that were opening in August 2022 or later. So that wouldn't apply to any of our high schools that are slated to open in 2021, and it wouldn't apply to any other schools that may be moved forward with our budget review process and our capital improvement plan. The problem with if we were to go ahead and do a solicitation now, say that we moved an elementary school forward to 2021, which I know is something our advanced planning committee is taking a look at. If we were to go ahead and move it forward right now, our program couldn't physically design it, couldn't solicit for new services, and then undergo the full design process. Because for an elementary school, for example, this process is going to add about nine months, three months for the solicitation, and then an additional six months on the initial design of a new prototype. So we want to make sure that none of the potential 2021 openings are affected by this, so we're saying it would be effective for August 2022 or later. And again, I also wanted to say it wasn't effective for anything that was adopted less than 10 years prior to August 2022. So if you had a middle school, if you had a K8, something that, you know, again, we're just starting to realize the reuse of those prototypes. We wanted to make sure that it didn't necessarily apply to those. You know, we still have some K8s that, we have one of our K8s that we have one use on right now, and we've never reused it. Well, we kind of got our lessons learned, we're working out the kinks on it, so now is the perfect time to be able to reuse that. So we want to make sure that we're seeing not only the savings in the amount of time, but also the savings in the cost savings, and really realizing those lessons learned. So that's why we were recommending the August 2022 date, but then also the 10 years for anything that had just been previously adopted. And really, it's really those, the two K8s, the suburban and the urban, and then the middle school prototype. And so that is it.
Oh, that's it. That was awesome.
That was awesome. Great job. No, that was really good. Vice Chair Gordon. I was making a note of one thing I wanted to follow up in, multitasking. If anybody didn't learn anything else this morning, multitasking doesn't work, I'm proof. Vice Chair?
Okay, thank you. I had so many questions, but, okay. Okay, I have a problem with just the prototype itself, because I know with state laws and everything, but I'm trying, okay. I do know we have a policy, I don't know, I'm getting it all mixed up here and I don't want to be mixed up, because one thing I resent is an architect making millions of the taxpayers, walking in our meetings with their little suit and tie, their highfalutin words and vocabulary, showing me Martin Luther King and Barack Obama and all those people who did nothing for Orange County, I'm sorry. Okay, Martin put us in jail, but thank God, we have the DSA order because of that. So that is something. But I go deeper, I go deep, I'm going deep. I do not like them coming in with their one little prototype plan. That's not, I learned from Darrell Flynn. Darrell couldn't understand why the schools in District 5 were so laid out, and yet we did prototype, but it didn't look like the prototype. It is because we sent their behinds back and our community, I don't like this, I just don't like it right now, the way it is just so structured. It just, you're not giving the people an opportunity to build their schools. It is their money. If they come in with a prototype, Orange County cannot have one prototype. Even, I'm going to take Melissa's, for example. In Melissa's area, they built a school there. It was just beautiful. They brought a school for us. Our people did not like it. They did not like it whatsoever. And they ran them out of the meeting. Matter of fact, all of the schools in my district, every one of them were built and they ran everybody out, because they came with their little prototype. It did not work. It did not meet the needs of that community. It didn't even meet the personality of that community. When I go through your community, your community in Pam, there were certain things that you guys wanted. Some you got, some you didn't. But you just can't come with a little prototype. We demand that they walk in there. We pay them a heck of a lot of money. I want to curse so bad. I've been cursing for two days in a row. I have been. But I really want to curse. I cannot sit there and let you do that. And I hope this board don't do it, because you're going to end up with a brick old wall, your school's going to look like prisons. And I thank God that District 5 looks beautiful. You will be surprised how many letters we get when they see Rock Lake. And everyone has been taken from some type of prototype. Okay? But they come in there with this little one prototype and they're going to tell us what they're going to do? Heck, no. No, they are not. We are going to tell them, and that's why this board had established additional policies. So I need to know from the general counsel office, how did you pull those policies together when it comes to what you're trying to propose here with the changes? And what we as a board established, the previous board established, as community input, when we get to the 40%, the 30%, the 100%? And we build our own schools. They cannot walk in there and tell us how to spend our money. We tell them how to spend it. We're not going to make it easy for them. I don't know who helped you guys put this together. But we are not going to let them tell us, not in my district, Windermere would never look the way it looks if we had allowed that architect, when he walked in that meeting, and I went to some of those meetings with Pam, to go in there. Melissa, we went up to Melissa and Zellwood went in her district. We liked what we saw, but we didn't want that. So we took what we liked and we made it our school. When we were building Ivy Lane, we liked another school that they did. It was a prototype. Then they told us, oh, we can't give this to you. You're giving them a free go, go and just build. Oh, heck, no, not, not, not in District 5. And if I have to fight it by myself, I'll bring my community in here to speak. Those architects and our designing, you're not going to sit here and make it easy for them to walk in. And I wish you could see, some of the board didn't want to do because it was a lot of meetings. But then, when they came into my district and they started looking, they said, well, how did you get that? How did you get this? How did you get that? I said, because the community gave an input on it. And they said, we took the whole front of Apocca Elementary. I think, ooh, it was so gorgeous. But go see Ivy Lane. It is just, wow. Okay, but they'll complain because they didn't like the fence. We were so glad to have a school. We didn't care about the fence. Architect didn't have nothing to do with the fence. We can get a fence later. We wanted the beauty of that prototype school that was in Apocca. We cannot get fenced in to one prototype. I can't sit here and let you do that. You will never fit the Windermere community. You will never fit the Apocca community. You will never fit out there to Timber Creek and Freedom. I know about every one of these schools because I almost dedicated myself into walking. I've been in every one. I know what's good, I know what's bad. And you can't come up here and give us as a board, this is what we're going to do. Heck, no, we're not. No, we're not. What we're going to do is merge those plans together and let the people, they're so happy. Magnolia is so happy that when we went out there for graduation, several of Dr. Jenkins' staff members were there. Dr. Zunhy was the speaker. Those kids came out on the stage, someone were tripping because the stage was all raggy, children breaking over. But they knew, they said, that's all right, Ms. Gordon, y'all going to give us a new stage. But we wouldn't have gotten it, had we not? They brought in some little prototype to patch it up, and we said, no. No, don't do that. Don't, don't, I hope that my board members, they can't see it, they don't understand it. Because if you haven't seen it and done it and been through it, you are clueless as to what goes on and how we get. Look at Rock Lake. They'll tell them, don't put it over there. Put it back, look at Tangelo. Look at Carver. Look at Memorial, look at West Ridge. Look at Evans. Don't let me go, I'll show you prototype. You are not going to give them a ticket to ride and make millions of us and walk away. And then, when it comes to repairing those daggone schools, only a few of those architects would come in and take a look at it and go back, only a few. And I could ask our facilities department to tell you who they are. Some of them don't even come back and help us fix them. Now, we're not going to give them all of the taxpayers' money and let them walk away with this and that. Communities have to build their schools. I know it's cheaper with a prototype, but they better come with two or three plans, three or more.
All right, let's hear from the superintendent.
Thank you, Ms. Gordon. I'm glad you raised a couple of those issues, because it gives us a chance to review some history. And then I can also clarify, apologize that we've not been clear. I think you'll be happy when you hear the clarification. And so, years ago, when the school district was building rapidly without the use of prototypes, there were inequities. And Ms. Gordon was actually the one that brought it to this board to say, what you build in this area is not what you're building in the suburbs. And so the whole notion, the concept of a prototype was really to fix some of those inequities. And Dr. Gordon was largely behind those conversations. That is commendable. So what we don't want is for the pendulum to swing too far in the other direction, where there are simply cookie cutter versions as well. What I apologize for, Dr. Gordon, we may not have been clear on, is that we are actually expanding the number of prototypes so that there will be choices to make. Yeah, I apologize, we weren't clear with that. Additionally, so think of elementary schools have three prototypes and middle schools have three prototypes and high schools will have two. Then I want you to also remember, I shouldn't say this word, but it'll just click in as different elevations. So a prototype for a high school might have that Olympia front-facing elevation, or in one instance, we changed that front elevation, the infamous outhouse. And so think of, so think of three different prototypes, Dr. Gordon, and different elevations that can be placed on the front. So actually, we're expanding some of the possibilities of future prototypes, I believe, with this policy. I apologize, we weren't clear, but I think you'll be pleased.
And then, and then I need the question answered, how are we merging the community meetings in with the percentages? Because those, those schools are not being built.
That remains the same. Still have the community meetings.
Okay.
No change there.
And then, remember, even though we did the prototypes and we did the elevations, we allowed adjustments. That's not in there. And we do need to let the architect know, they're just the architect. They're designing what the people want. And that was the purpose of our putting that policy together. That that community be proud of what they have. And that has shown forth so far, except for the last two incidents we had, but we are handling that. Melissa addressed it, and yourself addressed for my area. So let the record reflect it, let it be in there, because if the words are not in there, nobody's going to know to fight for it, and we're going to end right back up where you're building something on the east side and it's not being built on the west side comparable. Got it? And then, north and the south and the central, okay? Because that's a fighting word for me there. I just can't let, and let the architects know. They're not here, they used to go in and just tell us what to do. And Darrell said, I'm just saying, Ms. Flynn was just so, because we would go to each other schools and we would go in and out. And I'll never forget the day she was showing me her school. And I just chuckled all through it, because it was the prototype for Carver. She was walking me through Carver Middle School. But because of a couple of Dr. Jenkins' staff and parents, we were able to adjust the inside, make the halls a little bit wider, make passage. We were able to do so many little things by just sharing. We were able to change the furniture by just sharing. I mean, you will be surprised what happens. But I cracked up laughing when I told Darrell. She said, I just got to show you the school. And after, I waited till she showed me the whole school, and then I walked out. I said, girl, we are truly sisters, because you just showed me my sister's school. And what's the name of the school, Jasmine? And Carver is much more beautiful, inside and out. And I challenge you to come see it. Thank you.
Okay, I am. Folks, I am really sorry, I messed up here. I, I know I was next, I don't know who I booted. I booted somebody. And I got caddied again. Yeah, okay, thanks, thanks, Vice Chair.
Madam Chair, just make a quick ask of the public to come forward, if they have any comments.
Any members of the public like to address the board on this matter? All right, thank you. Boy, I thought I was clear. Now, I'm definitely confused. I had a couple of questions, but I think I need to start with ground zero again. So as I understood this, you were going to go out and solicit a number of prototypes, three for elementary, two for, I think, middle?
Three for middle, three for K8s, and it would be two for high schools.
Okay. And then, from that, you were going to review those, and you were going to create our own prototype?
So there were two. There was the first one, which is the selection of the three different prototypes. That's your, that's your architect prototype design method. So that's where we solicit the three for elementary, three for middle school, three for K8, and two for high school. And so this is what we do now. And this is, it's the same process. The only thing that's really changing is that we're adding this committee so that the school board now approves the prototype. So the subsequent design, the community meetings will still occur, that'll all be the same, and you'll still be able to go ahead and modify that. It's just this beginning process that we're taking a look at, and we're trying to add that transparency in. So then, that second method is that OCPS prototype. And so the purpose for that, again, was, you know, to try to establish one, and it was for consistency's sake. But it was also, we were going to try to bring in all the stakeholders and make sure that we could develop a prototype. So the thing is, is we don't have to use the OCPS prototype. We could use either of those methods. The board will ultimately have to approve it. So before anything is ever designed, before an architect is ever selected, it'll come to the board for approval.
Okay. Can I say back to you what I think I just heard?
Yes.
Okay. So we will have our process that we've had enhanced in that it will have, it'll be coming to the board, there'll be a little, there'll be more transparency. Meanwhile, we will also have our own prototype, and for each school, we can decide which prototype we're using. One of the prototypes that we've solicited or our own prototype. And regardless of which prototype we're using, that doesn't stop us from, Dr. Jenkins used the term, the face, the elevation, doesn't change, that doesn't eliminate the ability of communities to engage in elevations and other things that make the school unique, but still equitable in terms of what it delivers.
Correct. Absolutely.
Okay, I'm clear. I was a, I was a little, I thought it was one or the other, Dean Rogers, we were going to do both processes. In terms of the committee process, to make sure that as, how that prototype is chosen, that there is a staff-level committee that makes a recommendation that will take place. And that will come to the, that final decision will come to the board as well. Not just the initial prototype, but the choice of which prototype.
So what'll happen is, so when you have those architects-selected prototypes, that's where they'll go ahead and they'll, they'll look at the three different prototypes that were selected, and they'll come up with that report and then present that to the board with a recommendation. And so then, the board then makes that approval. And so this is just for the architect prototype design method.
Right.
So the board will go ahead and determine which prototype you guys want to go ahead and use, and then it's pushed back, then we actually go and contract with the architect. This is the first time we're really working with the architect at that point. And that's where, you know, we start our community meeting process and getting all the community's input as to what they think.
So let me back up again. So there's two different steps. There's the step of the architects bidding on being able to provide prototypes. They show us prototypes, we pick prototypes that we think can work. Then there's which prototype are we going to use on this school site, a separate process. And you're looking for the right prototype on that process. That is also coming back to this board.
Yes.
Okay, perfect. That's what I thought. The effective date, I understand the reason for that, that, but you would start the solicitation for those prototypes sooner, because it takes some time for, to get through that CCNA process?
Yes, we're talking about, for the, an elementary school that would open in 2022, we currently have at least one in our CIP, we're actually talking about starting that solicitation process next month. And so that would be for the new elementary school prototype architects.
Okay. And then, in terms of the 10 years, that 10 years is a timeframe that would come back to the board to make a determination whether to continue to use those or not, but it wouldn't prevent the board from deciding earlier than 10 years to go back out, or would it? Would that be part of what people are bidding on when they're, or solicit, providing us?
So in the solicitation, they wouldn't be guaranteed any 10-year period. It would just be that they're selected for that. So the board would still have the opportunity to come back earlier if, for whatever reason, you recognize that a prototype didn't work and you, you only had two, and you said, you know what, I want to scrap these. Or if both of those, those companies went out of business, you know, it makes sense for you to be able to bring it back to the board. You still have that flexibility.
Okay. And so that I'm really clear on the concerns that the vice chair raised, because I remember there was a period of time when the middle schools were like, they were all looking exactly the same, and they looked, they all looked equally terrible. That was, I just thought they looked like prisons. I couldn't believe they put that in the community. Yeah. And so there will be as much input and as much flexibility as we have now or more in this process?
Yes, absolutely.
In terms of how that school looks and fits into a community?
Absolutely. The board will have more input.
Okay, because that's really important. But also the equity, I can't even, I can't even imagine, I would not be okay at all if our schools did not all have the same, if the facilities weren't equal. That's just totally, totally wrong. So completely support what the vice chair said on this, and I'm glad to get some clarification, because I did come in a little confused. Okay, member Gould.
So I get the prototype from a functionality standpoint, I agree with that. I would even like to see more elevation options personally, that would fit each community better. I don't think that we offer enough choices now to our community for equitable pricing. I'm not sure. I'm not sure that, you know, when they come up with ideas, they're sometimes so far out of the financial ballpark and then they're frustrated. But maybe there are some different elements that we could present and get their input on a little bit more. And I think that would give them a little bit more buy in to the process. There's two things that I wanted to go a little deeper dive in. And that is, we're seeing a changing environment in education. And certainly the the speaker that we all heard this morning is really talking about more engagement than lecture style. So maker spaces and project lead the way and those kinds of things are where we're going. How will we adapt? Not necessarily the size of the footprint of the school, but the flexibility of the classrooms and the the spaces. And frankly, we contracted too much in our value engineering, the performing arts spaces. They are too tight for bands, they're too tight for chorus, they're too tight for backstage production work. And I've had this discussion with Mr. Morris, so he he knows this and with Jeff. So, you know, how do we, when we have robust programs like that, how do we make a school flexible enough to accommodate the interest of the kids? You know, performing arts especially in our district are huge. Now chess clubs and maker spaces and and robotics labs. You need space for a robotics lab because those things are everywhere. They go all over the place and they shoot things and they, you know, what they're building. So how would we accommodate that changing learning environment in a prototype model without having to go back to the drawing board? Because I think there's a way. And then I'll just get my other part out. Oh, that was it, the character of the building, I already addressed that at the front.
So I think one of the things by us just going out for the new prototype, you're going to be able to see some of those changes. Because, you know, you've heard about in a couple of the facilities presentations, you've heard about 21st century changes and stuff. And so what you'll see is, you know, the prototypes we're using now are from 2007. So what you may see when you, when we go through the solicitation process, you may see an architect come in, first, you may see an architect that we've never used before. You don't know what's going to happen through the solicitation process. But then second, they're going to come in with these prototypes and we're going to essentially have the initial use of them, which gives us the ability to tweak those spaces and gives us the ability to try to create some flexible spaces. I know one of the things we had at Windermere High is we had some of those flexible spaces and they ended up putting up partition walls because the people want, they wanted to use them as classrooms and stuff.
Well, that was out of necessity, not out of want.
It was out of necessity, but.
It wasn't out of want, that was necessity.
Right.
Because we can't put portable there except in one spot.
God, it looks stranded a little. So but I think actually coming, especially like you're, like I said, coming in for your new prototypes on your elementary school, that's going to be your opportunity to really look at those and to improve upon those spaces at this point.
So let me rephrase my question. How will we check? You know, because I think we did do some changes to our prototypes, but but I don't want to sound critical here because I love all my brand new schools. I don't think we flexed enough in, since I have been on the board for what I have been able to see in doing research across the country and around the world for for the spaces. You know, and I know some of that is cost. But how will we kind of check in? Because I think we are like technology now, we're moving much more rapidly in thought and mind legislation and practice are not are not as quick. But people are already ahead of of where we're delivering education right now. And and the next generation who are, you know, technology natives are going to demand it. So how do we make sure we're kind of checking in without being faddish? You don't want to be building fads because we did that once with these open air classrooms and they were totally non-functional. But how do we kind of check in on that and and work within the prototype system?
So what we can do, and we actually do modify our prototypes a little bit each time. As Dr. Gordon mentioned, she's had a lot of input from our community. They're prototypes, but I mean, we take a look, look at what the community says. And so I know that we we have issues with some of our architects. You know, they do come in with the plans contractually, they're supposed to come in with at least three plans for you to take a look at before anything's presented to the community. So, you know, it is something that that we just continue to work on. But I mean, it's getting that community input and, you know, some of the things I know that we've heard at some of the the meetings is they need more closet space or they need something like that. So what we do is each year, our staff meets with the stakeholders and they they essentially complete a lessons learned. And, you know, one of the things is, okay, they may not have enough storage room here. And so that's something they do apply to the prototype each time they use it. They go ahead and they update for life safety, but they make sure that they apply those lessons learned as well to each time. So that's why, you know, your Windermere High School may not look like a high school that was built 10 years ago because we have learned things throughout this process and we have updated those. And so that's the thing, I mean, we have, we have guys who, you know, attend F E F P A and they go and they look at different schools throughout the the state and even the nation to see, you know, what kind of technologies are they using? What are we, what opportunities are we potentially missing out on? And that gives us some flexibility, I mean, we still stay, you know, in the floor plans, but maybe we can adjust some spaces here, adjust some spaces here. Maybe it's designated as flex space rather than designated as this. So long as we're still, you know, within that building footprint, we do have some flexibility within that.
Well, thank you, and I knew that, but I think it was important to kind of pick that out a little bit more just because I think people think we keep doing the exact same component. I would like to to see, you know, more of that ingenuity come in even within the footprint, but I know that we are making adjustments and I appreciate that.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gould, you come back on if you need to because I think you're right where I am. I needed to make a comment that I heard Member Gallo stated. I I really thought, I thought Member Gallo had stated the best thing when she came on board about the outdated, but I'm going to come back and say it and say it, and and that was right on line. The next person up is, yes, Member Dental and then Member Bird.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Okay, so I I understood all of this when you went through it. I had a couple of questions, then they were answered and then they were clarified and now I'm more confused. So the definition, I guess, of prototype is confusing me. And the and where along the process it comes in. So when we initiated a design for a new school, do we designate beforehand in the request that we are asking for a design for the purpose of a prototype?
So for the, what we do is, we have the selection of the architects and they are selected as as prototype architects. So a lot of times they have their own school. And so that's why you may see an elementary school that's built here, that's built in Miami, it's the same school. So when they come in for the initial, we ask them for their prototype. So that's why it's called the architect prototype because it's their prototype. It's not ours, it's their prototype. It's the one that they're using, like I said, all throughout the state. And so they come in with the different, again, they're supposed to come in with that, with three different plans for us to take a look at. And that's what we go ahead and we work with and we tweak. And so, you know, I think I've seen one recently, I think one of the high schools had 17 different plans so far. So I mean, it's not like, oh, we come in with three and that's all we accept. Our our internal team reviews them and before we even move forward with it, so they'll tweak it.
Okay. So so the architects have the prototypes and they say, here's one of our prototypes? And we go, yeah, that that's a possibility for us?
So the architect has their prototype. And so, yeah, they'll send us their 830 prototype and we say whether or not that works for us.
Laura, can I, can I back up just just for the benefit? I think we're still maybe on two different processes or back to I'm confused. There is a process by which we solicit prototypes.
So we solicit the architects.
Yes, so start with that for the sake of answering that question.
And so that's that, that's when we solicit for the services, we're soliciting for the the architects. They have their prototypes, yes. So we at that, during the solicitation process, we are looking at their qualifications. We are not looking at their prototypes at that point. And that's how they're selected right now. We are not going through and analyzing, okay, which one's a better elementary school prototype? Which ones, you know, that that's not how the initial selection of the three architects works. You're looking at the qualifications of that architect at that point. So that's for the initial solicitation. So then the second part is where you have your initial use. And that's where for this architect prototype design, that's where you ask the architect, send me your prototype. And so our guys can reject that prototype or they can ask for a different one. But I mean, like Siskovich, you know, we know that they have a prototype right now and they have a prototype they've used in Miami and they've used all over. And Schenkel Schultz, it's the same thing. They have this one prototype that they typically building everywhere. So they send us, most likely it's a prototype they've built somewhere else. And that's what they send it to us. And our team can either, like I said, accept it or reject it. And they can also look at other prototypes too. And so when they're going for the initial use, they're going to be asking for these prototypes from each individual architect. So the architect's going to send us, so Schenkel may send us a prototype, Ziskovich may send us a prototype, Rhodes and Burrito may send us a prototype. Our team, you know, when they're going, this committee will then take a look at these three prototypes and say, which one's suitable for our school? And so that's what they do right now. They take a look at the prototypes and they say, which one's suitable? The only thing is, is you're, you guys, it doesn't come to the board.
Okay.
We have those prototypes now and, you know, like I said, we have each one for each architect. It just doesn't come to the board right now. So it's the same process we have right now. So that's the architect prototype design.
So we don't even really need to use the word prototype. We're just asking for architects to give us a design for a school that we need. Here are specifications, do you have a design, whether it's new for them or one that they're reusing? We just want a design.
So the reason we call it a prototype is because we're subsequently going to use that prototype for the reuse section. Again, you have the solicitation period and then you go out for your initial reuse, which is where you get those three from each of those architects, that's your initial use. Then when you go for the reuse, that's your prototype reuse.
And and.
Even though, okay, so.
Can I just add, it's important to say the word prototype?
Yes.
Because under statute, that's how they define a property, a design you're going to reuse. And you're going to have the option of being able to re, where you really have the savings on these projects is when you use it a second and third and fourth, however many number of times you can use it, that's where you have your real savings. So in the high school arena, for example, the first time we used it, I think it was 6% that we were charged on it. And then it was 4% on the second one and 3%, and those numbers are big. So the the cost on the reuse is significant. But you call it a prototype because you plan on reusing it. And so whether you ever use it or not, that depends on the design. You know, you could build a K eight, for example, and then the school board decides no more K eights, you may never use it again. Or no more K eights that are three stories or whatever. But when you initially bargain, contracted for it and everything else, you want to call it a prototype for that very reason and under statute, those are the ones you can reuse.
So then the the benefit for everybody then financially is they offer us a prototype and it, I guess, is cheaper for us because it's not a brand new model. We, and then they are hoping that we will use it again. We don't pay as much, but they get more money for the same design. Go ahead.
Can I answer that one? Because this is the part I still can never quite understand. It's not like buying, the first, as a lawyer, simple caveman lawyer does not understand construction world. Okay, I was under the impression when you bought the prototype, it's like I bought the specs and the design and now I just can get someone else. I give it to another architect and they can take it and build it. It doesn't work that way in architectural world because if they did that, first of all, they would probably charge you three times as much for the first design. But they're giving it to you with the understanding that you will hopefully come back to them and get to reuse it. Under the new system, do we get the, are we still forced to go back to the same architect? Or can we go to a different one?
For the architect design method, you are.
Yes.
For that second one, that's where we get the ownership. And that's where you're going to see an even more in a decreased cost.
If I can interject in this also, though, I think if you look at the legislative intent, I think when the legislature added this, they anticipated it, they thought it was going to work more like you're talking about. They thought that as long as you told the architect when they submitted that prototype design, you put them on notice, we can use that again, that that meant you didn't have to pay them next time. And there would be tremendous savings. And they require now that if we have two schools in the same, two of the same type of schools in a five year period, we must use a prototype. Okay, so we don't have a choice of saying, let's just individually solicit for each school. We have to use a prototype. It doesn't say that we have to use the same prototype. But I think inherent is the intent in it is you shall save money by using this school over and over again. That was their goal, to make us save money and be more efficient. Whether we like it or not, that was the goal. If this is too confusing at this point, is it possible to bring this back? I know we have a lot in front of us still, but in terms of the urgency, I know I've been one person who's been pushing for this, but the urgency, given the effective date, could we bring this back? We can bring it back.
Entirely up to the board, just remember, we had one individual who was very concerned about making sure this was implemented. This is our first effort to try and get it done.
I understand that.
And we can bring it back and get some more input at a later time.
The level of questions I'm hearing do not make me comfortable that the board has a firm handle on where we are and I think we need to have that. And given the effective date, it is not as if bringing this back in a month or six weeks is going to affect anybody who's going to be seeking to do business with Orange County, I don't think. Laura, you agree? Okay, you have a hesitant look on your face, I like have to read body language. Let's bring it back.
Okay.
Okay.
Melissa said she didn't mind waiting, so.
Okay.
But now I understand everything.
As Vice Chair, as Vice Chair, she's getting everybody weeded up there, very good, okay. So Melissa, we'll bring you back at a future point. And Miss, and Vice Chair, you're.
I blew up.
I'm sitting between Karen and the chair. You're sitting between Member Dental and the chair. Okay, number one, let me tell you why it's so confusing. Number one, you didn't explain it to me. Your committee didn't even meet with me, Deborah tried her best. I have said to Dr. Jenkins, she knows over and over again, but you did not know that, Dr. Jenkins, that you cannot bring a topic like this to this board ever again. Without, especially, I consider myself the builder. Okay, even my community said, get rid of her because all she does is build schools. Okay, then they, after they all got built, then everybody's saying, oh, my God, they really did it. Dr. Jenkins and Mr. Blocker really finished our community purse. I I really think if you're going to bring a topic like this, you need to meet with every board member. I'm sure that you did, but you missed me. What I need to know from the superintendent, Madam Chair, what is wrong with the process? I would have covered all of that with you in the meeting of why the change because I heard the general counsel say one member. That's why they're pushing it. But what is wrong with what we are doing now? Because let me tell you, I don't care how many architects you get. You're going to begin to fade away and you're going to give up equity and you're going to give up equality. And let me tell you why. You have the minority women business. You are not going to be able to get those kind of builders because we can't even get some of them to come and build simple schools for us. So now you are limiting the architectural designers, you are limiting your builders and now you're looking at certain people that that committee, the C and, what did I wrote it down? I can't keep people remembering all of that. The C, what is, what is it, Jasmine always asks you to say it all, CCNA, I can say it myself. Okay, so you're, I heard a couple of committee members and board members talk about that, which I thought was right on top. They were saying, wait a minute, who are these people? The CCNA, why can't, we have a selection in what what goes on. Why can't it be equality? Why can't it be a representative from every board member up here? You didn't talk to me, okay? Another thing, you're going to backfire because you're limiting the big, you're you're giving the big dogs the bone. And the little dog won't be able to get nothing out of this for years to come. I have got to go back, when I heard Member Gallo, she wasn't talking to me. But I was standing by her. But I was standing by her, and Ma'am Gallo, if I'm wrong, you could correct me. If I'm wrong, just say I'm wrong, and I'm okay with it. I could have sworn I heard her say, wait a minute, wait a minute. She said, we put a prototype out. And I've heard Pam Gould say this over and over and over again. 10, in 2022, I'll be sailing the Mediterranean blue. But I want you to know, how are you going to keep up with the building codes, and this board has fought for years, Tallahassee alone? Just because the code, bam, bam, bam. And you're getting ready to lock us in and say we're going to save money? I don't think so. But I heard Ms. Gould, and I heard Gallo say, wait, 10 years ago, they're not putting that kind of water hose in there. They're not putting those kind of bathroom toilets in there. They're not using those sinks. And what about all of the disability things? We don't even have everything up the disability code, whether the slants, I learned so much by being in the ESC classes, okay? And what you got to provide, and we are trying to provide that. How are you going to keep up with your building code? But these are my questions, Madam Chair, to the superintendent and her staff. The biggest thing is what is wrong with what we are doing? Nobody explained that to me. What makes this better? What are you trying to share tonight with us? The flexibility someone mentioned tonight is just not there. And to the superintendent, which is very great working with her, is what do you need from this board that you, for you to really get us to see what you're trying to do? Because we don't know it. If we did, like Madam Chair, I'm so glad she said it, that we don't understand it all. You cannot regulate Florida building codes. You just can't regulate it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Dr. Jenkins?
Absolutely. Dr. Gordon, Madam Chair, members of the board, we will have those one-on-ones scheduled and back this up for several weeks.
Okay. And if I can, it's because I'm the initial person who suggested that we revisit this policy, and I know a number of others. Here's what, here's what I thought was wrong with what we're doing, Vice Chair Gordon. What we had in place, what we have in place right now, is only one high school. So, and I think suddenly we're starting to build a number of high schools, and we don't have any choice but one high school. And I thought that we should have more choice, and there should be more competition. And the other thing that I felt was missing was that when we have multiple prototypes, like we have for elementary schools, the staff was making the decision which prototype. And there wasn't a clear, transparent process for how they were making that decision, and it wasn't coming back to this board for final approval. So those are the main changes that we wanted to make. More options for this board at the high school level, and to have the prototype come back to us. Yeah. And so they're in line with what you want to see. There was confusion, and I know, I've, you know, we all have our strengths and weaknesses. There's a lot I'm learning. In the arena of procurement, that is my, that's my strength because of what I did before. There's so much I'm learning, but I can see how confusing it is, and I want us to all feel comfortable when we get there. Policies are very, very important. So on this one, we can take a pause and slow down and get up, everybody up to speed and comfortable, okay? So, very good. Thank you so much, Dr. Jenkins, for accommodating that request. All right. Laura, thank you.
It was a great presentation, even though we were confused.
We'll go back and rework that.
I'm sorry.
So there, so Madam Chair, there are two remaining policies. We're taking bets over here. General counsel believes these two will be fairly short.
Okay. I say we keep moving. If anybody definitely needs a break, let me know. If you're okay with individual breaks, we plug on through. Let's keep going.
And then, and then after these two, remember, we have a code of conduct.
Oh, I thought you meant that includes the code of conduct. Well, let's get going.
No, that would be number three, all right?
Okay.
Vivian, your turn.
Good evening.
Welcome.
JRA, the revisions proposed to JRA are really in the opening section. They relate to parameters for disclosing names and addresses of students as part of the provision of district services. The goal of the policy revision is really to just tighten up the language, to require that if we are proposing to provide the names and addresses of students as part of the provision of district services, a contract will be required, which includes protections for the control and release of that information, and that contract will require board approval in order to permit the release of that information.
Is that it?
And that is the main change to JRA.
Wonderful, thank you. Any members of the public wish to address the board? Board members, Member Gallo.
Madam Chair, just so, just for clarification, so I understand. So, for example, if somebody were to come to our district and request all the name of our additions volunteers, before we released those records under public records, the board would be notified?
This is separate, this is meant for commercial use, in the sense of if we have a vendor who is saying, as part of the services that I want to provide to you, I need the names and addresses of...
Like if Herb Jones come and said, can I have, so I could talk to them about class rings or whatever?
Just a point of clarification, I'm sorry, Board Member Gallo. You're talking about additions, she's talking about student records, two different things. Additions volunteers are a separate list, maintained by a different group, don't have the same furtive responsibilities that we're talking about. So I just want to make sure we're talking apples and apples, not...
Thank you for clarifying that, because I was confused.
Did you mean the...
No, thank you.
Do you have a question on...
I do. So, so we're talking about vendors like Herb Jones, or those that we use, if they were to ask for those records, the board would have to approve it before you would release the records? I just want to try to understand that I understand the change in the policy.
The change, the policy always required board approval. The goal is to tighten up the language to specify that if we have a vendor who is requesting names and addresses of students as part of the provision of those services, that request will require a contract that has language in it to protect and control how the vendor can use that information. And that contract will require presentation to the board for the board's approval.
Thank you.
Thank you, that's clear, thank you. Member Castro Dental?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Would the example of the attendance letters that were sent to parents when their students were not, like when they missed a certain number of days, they were sent to the students' homes saying, we have this information, we would like for your child to be aware that you're on track for missing too many days? I mean, I know that that was a service that the district contracted for.
Yes.
So that's an example of...
Correct. That vendor, as part of the services that were being provided, needed a list of students who were on the verge of having a truancy issue. And so as part of that agreement, we agreed to provide certain information. We controlled how the vendor could use that information, and then that contract was presented to the previous board for approval.
Thank you.
Thank you. Member Lopez?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So it's only for those type of vendors?
Well, it's for, basically, the commercial use of that, of student names and addresses. Ordinarily, we have directory information where we can release a student's name and address under certain circumstances. This is a situation where a vendor is saying, I want to provide photography services to the district, and in order to advertise those photography services, I need a list of all of your elementary school students by name and address. In an effort to make sure the vendor doesn't receive that information, and then go off and do whatever the vendor wants to do with it, we are proposing in the contract to tight, in the policy, to tighten up the policy language, to require that our agreement with the vendor is going to detail how the vendor can use the information, specify what information the vendor is receiving, and then ultimately require that that contract be presented to the board for the board's consideration of what's being proposed, for the board to sign off on that agreement.
Before we send it?
Okay.
Thank you.
Member Bird?
I'm going to kind of change gears a little bit and go to the, oh, unless you haven't. Is this all that you were going to cover?
Yeah, the other provision, the other changes for JRA are really formatting changes and by referencing the parent as well as the legal guardian. So that was really the substantive change to JRA.
Can I just bring up the legal name of student, that part of the policy?
Sure.
I understand that it says that if a parent comes in and wants to change the name of a student who's already enrolled, it's different than what's on the birth certificate or supporting evidence, that they have to wait until a final court order verifies the legal name change. Is that, I'm assuming that's relatively typical? I mean, my only question, I'm thinking in reference to like our transgender students that, and I, off the top of my head, know quite a few that have changed their name to a completely different name, not like a nickname or anything. So my question is, every one of those students has to go and get a legal court? Is that what, I mean, that's what this is saying?
Correct. Statutorily, we're required to maintain the records in the student's legal name.
In the student's legal name, okay.
If the student wants to go through the process to change their legal name, once we receive a final court order designating the name change, then we will incorporate that name change. But until that point, we have to maintain the continuity of the records in the student's legal name.
Yeah.
So maintenance of the legal name is one thing. What you refer to the child or the student in your class and how they are addressed is a different issue, and we work with our students. So my son's name is Gabriel Keys Rodriguez. He just got referred to in a graduation ceremony as Gabriel Rodriguez. He never goes by Gabriel, he goes by Keys. And so his teachers and everyone else that knows him typically knows him as Keys. Particularly with those students that are in the community, the transgender community, we work very closely with those teachers, administrators, and make sure they're aware of it, so they don't call the student by a different name that would obviously may cause harm or psychological issues to that child.
Prior to the legal...
Prior to the legal change. And some, some go ahead and change it, because they know it's an ongoing thing. If they go to the driver's license or anywhere else, they have to answer those questions constantly, so they go ahead and change it to protect their child.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
All right, next, Member Gallo?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And so the paper that we send out to the parents at the beginning of the year that opt out, if they opt out, their name, their address, and the child's name will not be released, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And then to Member Bird's comment just now, do we, is that in policy? Do we have something in policy on how we handle name change with transgender students?
I don't think we have a policy on any of that. It's just been practice of the district for some time. And it's the same thing with accommodations and restroom facilities and everything else. There is no stated policy as regards any of that. We just have very good, clear direction from our office. Ms. Corin is here, and she, well, the case law is unsettled, though, so I'm going to be clear to say...
There's a records case out of Seminole County that was...
Do you mind coming up to the mic? Thank you so much for joining us. You must have been monitoring, I appreciate that.
There's a records case out of Seminole County that says that you keep your legal name on your records. That's the...
That's not, Ms. Corin, so just to clarify, I think your question is, do we have a policy or procedures that pertain to changing the name and making the accommodations, which is the opposite of what's in the case law, I think, and...
But you're talking about a practice of using their chosen, their choice of their name rather than their legal name.
That practice is not in the case law.
That is not in the case law. The case law says that their legal name stays on their documents. However, through Legal 101 and Legal 102 and the trainings that we do every year with all of our administration, we use the presented name of the child when they are in school so that they have a safe place.
Okay.
And, and part of the reason why we don't codify any of this is because the case law is very unsettled on all of these issues. So in the years before, when we've given presentations, Ms. Corin and I, we've kind of said, this is the case law today on the transgender issue. It'll change, maybe, maybe it won't. It's changed several times on the issue of, of use of locker rooms and everything else, but that's why we haven't codified it with either a policy or anything more than just guidelines and internal procedures that we follow.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Member Vice Chair Gordon, and then Member Colbert.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mrs. Kokotis, thank you so very much, and Ms. Corin. General counsel mentioned something, and so did Members Bird and Gallo, in reference to the name changing. I ran into this during graduation. I want to just ask real quick, and I heard Mr. Rodriguez, he brought it up about graduation. So I'm wondering if we need to check our policies and procedures to add a couple of these things in there, that they are stating that actually happened, you know, with our transgender students and stuff. But my, my problem that I had in three different counties, Lake County, Osceola County, and Orange, during graduation, it wasn't the children, the students, it was the senior parents that just paraded on the counselors' offices in selected schools, not all, in selected schools. And I could gladly share that with you, if you're interested. And they demanded that their names be changed, to call what they had been called Gabriel Noel Keith. And they went and got court order records so that when that child walks across the stage, that that name will be cool. But I went and did like Bird Carrier used to do. I did a little, I went to Lake County, went to a graduation there, because my grandson was graduating. I went to Osceola, because my kids from my school were graduating. And then I came to Orange, and I asked several of the students, you know, my Hispanic students especially, what, you know, what the name, because at one school, they were telling their name to the person, which kind of held up the line. They were saying, you know, I'm Rodriguez, you know, Varego, or whatever, because that's the way they wanted it called, and I think that's a great way to handle it. But the parents actually went in some guidance office, and I wanted to know, I don't know if we had the same problem, but they insisted that the name be changed so that the kids won't be last. You know, they didn't want them to be last in line. It was all kinds of things that I couldn't believe, but those parents were fighting to the end. So I don't know if we had anything like that to happen, and can we avoid that for the 2020 class that is coming up? If it happens, I do know of two schools in this county that it did happen in, but we were able to, to work that out. But they wouldn't do it in Lake. But some of them did it because, like you stated, you said they had a court order. So the court order, they had to call the child name, even though the legal name that they gave. And then I said, well, why did you do that? Why did you go get a court order? She said, because he didn't want to be called last, which was unbelievable. And then a lot of kids picked that up. So had you heard about anything like that in Orange County with the 22 high schools and the Orlando, you know, technical colleges that we have, Orange Technical Colleges?
No.
Okay.
And, and the, the goal of the policy is basically the student's educational record. And so that's really what the policy is trying to deal with, in the sense of, you know, if you have a student that's named John Smith, and all of a sudden, John Smith wants to become John Jones.
Right.
For sake of continuity of the record, we need a, a legal document...
And you stated it.
Stating the official name change.
Do we have that written anywhere in our policies and procedures under the student record?
The policy requires that the records remain in the student's legal name, unless that name is changed.
But then you could say, I mean, but you're not giving them that option. What you said earlier, that if they have a court order, they can change their legal name?
Under the section designating legal name of the student, the section states that the student's name shall be recorded based on the birth certificate name, unless...
Yeah, but if they, on the birth certificate, but if they go change it, okay, then you need to specify it, that's why I'm bringing it up. If, if we are saying that, and then you stated that if they have a court order, they can change their legal name. I just wrote down what you said, so help me with it.
So the court order, ma'am, is, the court order that we're referring to, ma'am, is for a legal name change.
Yes.
So the court order is, if you have a legal... So the court order is, if you have a legal name, if you receive a court order to have a legal name change, if I was to change my name to Sarah Gordon today, it would actually, that court order would also apply to my social security card, my birth certificate, and everything else.
So we are telling our parents that they can change the name, but it has to be through the court order. And I know you said it's in there, but I don't understand it that way.
It's not just a court order where a judge says, I'd like you to call Sarah Rebecca when she walks across the stage.
Yes.
It's saying that your legal name has changed so that, it's not just a court order telling us that we have to call someone something else on the willy-nilly.
I saw you shaking your head. So did you know of any incidents like that in Orange? There were several in Lake County and Osceola.
I only know of students that have gotten court orders to change their name for custody reasons.
Emancipation. A lot of kids did that.
Things of that nature. I have not heard of a court order just for the purpose of graduation.
Yeah. Okay. Well, they did it. All right, and I just.
There are always possibilities.
How did they get it?
Absolutely understand that.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Member Cobert.
Just a quick clarification for Member Bird and Member Gallo on addressing a child by their preferred name on our forms that we fill out every year. If you think about it, there is your last name, first name, preferred name. So that if a student in the classroom wants to be called by a preferred name, that's on our form.
So not by policy, but we do have a form. There's a documented process. And based on legal counsel's recommendation, it would probably be preferable that we not put it in policy at this point because the case law is so unsettled. Thank you. Okay. We have closed out this discussion. We did not receive any public input. No one is here for public input. Let's move on to the next. And I think the last policy before we get to the Code of Student Conduct, which is KCE Ethics and Lobbying.
KCE is our ethics and lobbying policy. The proposed language relates to contact between OCPS personnel and lobbyists. And the proposed language is essentially two separate areas. The first deals with communications between lobbyists and board members. And the language that is being proposed is to prohibit texting between lobbyists and board members and to require that all communications between lobbyists and board members be limited to meetings, phone calls, emails, using the district's email system, or a written submission. And the second proposed area, the second proposed language relates to texting between lobbyists and either procurement personnel, the superintendent, or staff members with contracting authority and all other district personnel. The goal of the language is to limit texting under those situations to transitory messages only, with the preferred method being either meetings, emails, phone calls, or a written communication. And lobbyist, as defined by the policy, is anyone who is attempting to influence the board on an action that may be foreseeably presented to the board. There are exceptions to the definition of lobbyist. If a parent wants to place a phone call regarding their student, they are not a lobbyist. A government official who's acting on behalf of their own agency by definition is not a lobbyist. An attorney representing their client is not a lobbyist. A member of a PTO who is calling regarding a particular issue is not a lobbyist. So when you take out those categories of individuals, you are dealing with folks who would fall within the typical definition of a lobbyist, of someone who's trying to influence the board's decision positively or negatively on a foreseeable action. The goal is to essentially prohibit text messaging between lobbyists and board members and to allow text messaging between lobbyists and other district personnel, provided it's transitory in nature. Transitory, according to the general retention record standards, is language that is of a limited use value. It's a text message, I'm running late for our meeting. Are we still meeting at 5:00? It's those sorts of messages. We have proposed some language to the superintendent to modify Management Directive 09, which is the Employee Use of Technology Directive. And that proposed language is essentially requiring that district personnel use text messaging only for transitory messages. In the event of an emergency or something that requires a text message, then it is, then it is the employee's duty to preserve that text message so that we can comply with public records. And that is the only proposed change to KCE.
Members of the public. Now, Members of the public, Member Gallo?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm just curious as to why this is being put into policy? Was there a reason why we added this? I mean, text messages are open to public records for all the board members, so I'm just curious. That's my first question. I have a follow-up on why we decided to put this into policy.
Can I take that one?
Sure.
This was, remember, you may recall back in January, we had the ethics training we provided our board members, I provided. So as part of that discussion, the Chair had brought up the issue either there or around that time, that she wanted to avoid lobbyists texting board members directly because there was, there's other ways to communicate with you that create a record, that being emails. And so this is clearly an initiative led by the Chair, so.
Yeah, so let me answer your question. Woody said it perfect, but when somebody emails us, the email is captured, the email is coming through the system. It's not going to get lost. It can't even be deleted. Even if you wanted to delete it, it's backed up. If somebody is texting you on your personal phone or even your school district phone, those emails can be deleted. There's no, there's very, it's very difficult to recover them. I can tell you from first personal experience how many times I took my phone and had it submitted to recover everything off the SIM. So deleting something of a cellphone is a possibility. Record of it, there's no record kept in this building. I now have a school district phone, but I live in constant peril that if that phone decides to take a dive in the pool, which mine have been known to do that, that along with it go those text messages if I can't recover them. So because the greatest concern I think people have is the communication of school board members with lobbyists, well, all of us with lobbyists, and whether or not lobbyists are having an undue impact on us. That's why we have all these reporting requirements. It's very hard to ensure the public that we're satisfying them when it's coming through a text message. So it was my suggestion that since we don't have the $100,000 a year text guard system that we had at the county, and I'm not advocating that that's an efficient use of funds, but that's what it costs to preserve those text messages, that an alternative approach, if we're not going to do something that expensive, would be that we just tell lobbyists, call us by phone, you're welcome to do that, come in for a meeting. If you meet off-site, by the way, you still need to report that you've had that meeting. But it is more transparent and more foolproof. That was the reason. It's obviously a board decision. It is not, this is my opinion, and I asked to have it in here for the board, but it is a board decision.
Okay. So my second question is, in policy, it states those, you know, transitory texts are allowed between district staff and lobbyists, but not between board members and lobbyists?
Correct.
And then can we further define that as, someone who spends time in Tallahassee and someone who is around lobbyists the majority of my time, I text lobbyists all the time. So, and none of it has to do with school board policy, but when I'm talking about, and I don't know in the future, they may have something that will come before the board, but for me not to, for me sign onto a policy where I'm going to text a lobbyist that I know, you know, hey, let's have lunch, or hey, what do you know about this bill? And now I'm prohibited from doing that. I'm going to be honest, I'm going to have an issue with that because you're tying my hands on how I conduct my business, not even, not just in that realm, but also my business that I own as a board member. Because in my business, I talk to lobbyists all the time. My job is to get money from lobbyists for some of my clients. So I may have an issue if we can't try to clarify some of that language.
That makes a lot of sense. Can I respond to that?
Sure.
I think that we could clarify that language. The purpose of this was not to, was to prevent individuals from lobbying using text messaging. And I think that the difference between somebody being able to contact you who happens to be a lobbyist, a registered lobbyist, and somebody using the text message as a way to lobby you are to, is a distinction that we could easily make. And I remember those days of spending a lot of time, and I know exactly what you're talking about now that I think about it. Yeah. Thank you. Member Gordon?
Yes. Thank you. I'm glad that you brought this up, Madam Chair, but I'm glad that Member Gallo brought that up because I'm not being paid, but I do work with organizations that I do have the lobbies in Tallahassee sometime and in Washington, and I do go, probably won't be going much now. But you mentioned other district personnel in that. So if I'm just, when I'm, other district personnel would be where? All of, I mean, other school, not, it'll have to be in the sunshine, right?
It could be a principal. It could be a lobbyist who's reaching out to a principal.
So what, I like what Madam Chair said, so I need to just say, call me or come in if it's a principal or a staff member?
No, this is between someone who is not an OCPS individual, who is attempting to influence or educate you in a way on a particular matter that may come before the board. If it's a principal at a school who wants to reach out to you and has an issue, they can certainly reach out to you via text message. The goal is to make the text messaging more transitory in nature. Dr. Gordon, I'd like to talk to you. Do you have some time? Rather than, Dr. Gordon, here's my issue, and there's a whole text message.
And we get that all the time. Write a dissertation in on there, I'm telling you. Okay, so no more, you can't do that anymore. I mean, you, I mean, this is what we are saying in this language here on the revision.
As to this policy, it's referring to individuals who would fall into the category of lobbying. We have proposed to Dr. Jenkins that there be a modification of the management directive that essentially discourages communication via text message unless the message is transitory.
I love that. That's the best to just predict. I have to go back though to Emma Gallo's, I know she does, like she said, that's how she makes her living, you're okay. The personal business, I'm just a little confused on that because if they get our texts, here, same telephone number, I mean, per se, or even our own personal, what can we do with the personal business and her aspect or even my aspect on it when I do what I need to do with some of those organizations?
The policy is only intended to govern OCPS business. It's not intended to govern private communications.
So you can't co-mingle and put things, you can't?
Well, I mean, I think if.
It shouldn't be any co-mingling in there either then, right?
It's meant to cover OCPS-related business, so it's not meant to control a communication that you might get from a family member that's a detailed text message.
No, I'm saying a business. You know, we talk to businesses all the time to become business partners. Several of them were sitting in there today at the summit. And they are lobbyists.
Yes.
They are main lobbyists.
Yes.
Because, I mean, that's how we got that $7 million floating through the state.
The goal of the policy would be, as to communications between, let's say, those types of businesses, to essentially prohibit text messaging between a board member and those businesses. The goal is to have the communications be via email or by phone or a meeting.
Okay, I love it. I heard Member Kesterdenal said transparency. So what I'm hearing today, like several of those supporters that sponsored, we have relationship with several of those that were in there today.
Yes.
And they have given to our schools and maybe even our campaigns. So, say it again. Okay. All right. Okay, it's gonna, I'm trying to make sure that when we leave there today, we understand exactly where we are with the ethics and lobbying because we are friends, and it is hard when you're running a business. I mean, I've been there, even when I worked very closely with NSBA and lobbied for them. FEA, I was big time lobbying for NEA and FEA, okay, throughout the state. And then the farm workers was my biggest lobbying group, pretty much, you know. I enjoy those. And even my church, they have lobbies. A lot of the churches, we go up there on certain days in our sorority. We don't lobby, but we carry issues and we do talk to those that are lobbyists. So the transparency, okay, just trying to remember it and trying to keep it separate. And the best thing to do is just text three or four words and that's it.
Well, as the policy is proposed, there would be no communications by text between board members and lobbyists.
Okay.
As to other OCPS personnel, it would allow texting, but only for transitory messages. The, I think the goal of the proposed language was to sort of steer lobbyists to communicate with the board members via other methods that were transparent for public records purposes. Have them send you an email, hey, can we have a chance to talk about X, Y, and Z? They can certainly call you on the phone, but it's meant to eliminate a substantive text that we are then not able to capture for purposes of public records.
But going back to the concern that was raised, if we change this language to say that registered lobbyists may not lobby a board member using text, then we haven't said a registered lobbyist can't communicate on a personal matter that happens to be a friend, or you're up in Tallahassee and they want to have lunch, but they're prohibited from using text messages as a means of lobbying. And I think if we do that, we've addressed that concern, and that was always the intent. And I think you bringing to light the reality of it is important that we do that now because it's very hard to change ethics policies later. Okay. Okay, so, Member Kesterdenal?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Kokotis, do we have a OCPS lobbyist registry?
We do. We have a lobbyist registration process where lobbyists are supposed to fill out an application. They do so on an individual basis, not necessarily a lobbying group. They complete that application. We then track them in the sense of they're required, they have reporting requirements as to how much they've spent as part of their lobbying efforts for the district, and that's an annually updated list. The problem is, is that the folks who don't go through the registration process, but then still reach out to the board or to other OCPS employees who are engaging in lobbying, but for one reason or another, they have not gone through the registration process. And that's why the language lobbyist, rather than registered lobbyist, was used.
Where could I find that list?
I can, I have the list. I can certainly distribute it to you. We also publish updates on the website. If you go under the Legal Services website, there is a section for lobbyists, and that list is updated as we have new lobbyists register.
Okay. I know that's not in the policy language, but that would help me know who considers themselves, who's doing their part as far as registering as a lobbyist? And then that would be helpful. Thank you.
And in changing the language, let's make sure, we talked about, if we use the term registered lobbyist, we're talking about registered with OCPS, not registered with the state or some other entity. Okay. We are, we are done.
So.
Thank you. Yes.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, we can't change the language, obviously, because it's been advertised this way, and that is considered a substantive change. But we're going to take it back, we'll bring it back. But the other thing is, I will, we'll make sure, unless anyone else contacts me otherwise, I will make it a point to make sure that Ms. Attorney Kokotis and I meet with Member Gallo to make sure when we have the revised language, I can get your input. I can't do it with all of you because then I'm breaking sunshine by doing that, but I can meet with one member to make sure, since you have the greatest concern. And then when it comes back in a forum like this, hopefully we got it right the second time. So, thank you.
Are we using registered lobbyists?
I think the recommendation is to use, I understand the concept. The concept is you want to mean someone who's registered with OCPS as a lobbyist. I think that's how it's defined in the policy. I don't want to take time looking to confirm that, but I understand exactly where you're headed. I think the way we wrote it, we thought it was going to achieve our goal. This is the purpose of this, is to bring out and flesh out other issues. You've done that, so thank you. We'll bring it back better.
Yeah, absolutely. Very good. Thank you.
Thanks, Vivian.
Thank you, Vivian. Good job.
Okay, we're on our last Code of Conduct.
Code of Conduct.
Come on down. Thank you for your great conduct and-
Yes, we are trying to pull up the red line for the code.
Okay.
I'm not sure where they normally put it on the computer. Showing up there. No, it's in Board Docs. I'm still learning this whole IT thing. I didn't go to school for that, so. Good evening. I am Sarah Kopeski. I work with the legal department, and I also assist student discipline with legal matters. Here with me tonight are the area administrators who also support student discipline. We have Mickey Joyner, Tony Bullard, Valencia Boyd, Charlie Russ, and Delilah Hernandez. I'm going to be, begin by presenting the red line for Policy JIC, and then I will turn it over to the area administrators to review the code itself. Prior to today, we've had, we have presented our changes to the superintendent and cabinet and have reviewed all revisions individually with each board member. We have also received valuable feedback from each board member who have provided great procedural suggestions that we are looking into for the upcoming school year. Any suggestions or edits made by individual board members as it pertains to the policy or code will be presented as an addendum to the code or a version 2.0. Version 2.0 will also include legislative updates that were recently passed. We will, we will review version one first and then review suggested edits for version 2.0. Version one is on the agenda for June 11th, 2019, school board meeting to be adopted, and version two will be on the agenda for the July 30th, 2019, school board meeting to be adopted. Okay. And in lieu of doing a PowerPoint, we thought it would be easier to go through the red line as we did with all of you in individual meetings. So I'm going to start on page two with our first update to Policy JIC. And here, we include jurisdictional language added under student control and supervision to encompass all areas that OCPS may take jurisdiction to discipline a student. These areas include while the student's attending school, a school-sponsored activity, being transported to and from school, while on board property, my apologies, and when appropriate, any other jurisdictional area as permitted by Florida statutes and/or State Board of Education laws. And that's just to encompass all the places where we can take jurisdiction. The next change you will see will be on pages three and four, to the zero tolerance for school-related violent crime. This was updated to include when a school should report an act to an SRO and also define serious threat to school safety and petty acts of misconduct. In addition, it notifies the community that the student has the opportunity to review the discipline action imposed on them as outlined in the Code of Student Conduct. So before, when we reviewed this, when we came to you as a work session, there was concern that it says, well, it says we need to define criteria and we need to adopt policies, so we went through and kind of reworded things and then made definitions for serious threat to school safety and petty acts of misconduct to update everything. The next change, major change you'll see, and there are some formatting edits that you'll see as we go through, for instance, a section four here, it's not changing anything substantially, it's just a formatting edit, so I'm going to skip over that. The next one will be on page eight, the Bring Your Own Device Policy. So this section was modified and reformatted to include student-issued devices, so you'll see a change to the title there where we took off Bring Your Own Device. On the next page, we've defined OCPS student-issued device as well as personally-owned device. And then jurisdictional language has also been added under this section as it was previously in the policy. On page 10, you will see a lot of redlining for letters D, E, and F. That's actually not a change, it was just moved up as part of that reformating. And then again, the jurisdictional language was added at the bottom of page 10. On page 11, we added the language regardless of intent, if a violation of state or federal law is suspected, the matter will be referred to law enforcement. And then this is where that language was moved from previously that I had pointed out, so you'll see a lot of strike-through on page 11 that was moved up to page 10. At the bottom of page 11, there's also additional strike-through because there is a list of people that students could report cyberbullying to, and as opposed to doing a list, we just said, report it to school officials. So if there is victim of cyberbullying, then they can just go to anyone at the school and report it. On page 12, again, you'll see a lot of strike-through, and that section right there is repetitive of a previous section talking about searching a student's device, and there's also procedural language in there that we didn't believe belonged in policy because that's something that we would do, talk about in our trainings and also provide in our procedure handbook. And for version 1.0 of JIC, that, those are all the changes. I will now turn it over to Mickey Joyner to go over the code.
Okay. The code has been reorganized and updated throughout. Some language within the code has been simplified for better student understanding. In addition, the term infractions has changed to offenses throughout, and guardians have been added to parents throughout. To look at page one, acknowledgement, the jurisdictional language mentioned by legal and policy JIC has been added throughout the code as well. Bullet three includes vaping. Bullet four states all threats made to a school or person we take seriously regardless of intent. You will see this addition made throughout the code whenever a threat is mentioned. Bullet six adds the phrase, random searches may occur at any time and are not protected by safe harbor. At the bottom of the page, the parent slash guardian signature block has been added. Also at the bottom of the page, the term refusal has been added. Pages three through five is the table of content and summary changes. These pages will be updated once the code is adopted. If you look at page six, the code summary, this page was initially at the back of the code, and it has been moved up front, that's why you notice all the red line. On page seven, the EO statement, the EO non-discrimination statement has been moved from the back of the code to the front. If you go to page 10, which is with FERPA, language is added to section two to allow parents to supplement their child's educational record if their parent requests an amendment to the record and the request is denied. On page 11, again, we're dealing with FERPA, the language is updated pertaining to the release of directory information. In addition, a link is provided for parents to find the form to opt out of the release of directory information. The information may be released, is updated to reflect the information in Board Policy JRA. And at the bottom of page 11, there is notification that if a parent opts out of the release of directory information, they may not receive mailings from third-party vendors with information pertaining to items such as class rings, yearbooks, summer camps, and et cetera. If you turn to page 13, student rights and responsibilities. Pursuant to Section 1006.07 Florida statutes, the following student rights was added, to have knowledge of the Code of Student Conduct, and the following student responsibility was added, to follow the guidelines set forth in the Code of Student Conduct. Also, at the bottom of page 13, under freedom of speech expression, the following was added to student responsibilities, refrain from using speech or expression that could substantially disrupt the learning environment or harm the health, safety, or welfare of On page 14, also, dealing with students' rights and responsibilities, student records was removed as student records are discussed in section one. On page 15, under safe harbor provision, safe harbor is reworded for better student comprehension. In addition, the following notification is added, law enforcement may be contacted for specific offenses which may include, but are not limited to firearms, drugs, explosives, devices. Objects not allowed by the code that are discovered during a random search are not protected by safe harbor. Also on page 15, we have updated the participation in extracurricular, co-curricular activities. We change interscholastic and intrascholastic were removed and replaced with extracurricular and co-curricular. In addition, the following statement has been added, schools deserve the right to remove any student from any offense of the code which substantially disrupts the school or community. The bottom of this section references Policy JJ for additional information. Pages 16 and 17, the Code of Civility, okay, you see a lot of red because the Code of Civility was moved from the back of the code from pages 22 to 23. On page 19, under student dress, the word minimal is removed to notate that the standards contained herein are the dress code standards for all OCPS, Orange County Public School Schools. Number six and seven were combined to avoid repetitive language. Headgear is updated to include examples. The forefinger rule for tank tops has been replaced with three inches, as in requirement, and a requirement has been added to state that any adjustments to the dress code may be made upon approval of the area superintendent. If you turn to page 20, under transportation, students are permitted to use their electronic device while on OCPS transportation so long as they have headphones slash earbuds and they have one ear free to hear directions. On page 24, okay, what deals with truancy, we have changed the title to fail to attain classes and reference skipping in this section. There is also a statement included referencing the loss of privilege to obtain a driver's license if the student is truant from school. This language comes from the Florida statute. Also on page 24, under cell phone policy for students, language was added to allow the principal to grant exemptions for cell phone use on campus during the school day. On page 26, out-of-school suspension, pass and restorative justice, recreate a section pertaining to out-of-school suspension and the A2S program that is available to some students. A2S allows students to attend an alternative site during their time of suspension to complete assignments from teachers while being provided care to education for life and social skills training. On the same page, under positive alternative school suspension, there is language added to state that restorative practices are used in congruence with pass. Also on page 26, restorative justice is changed to restorative practices, and bullying is removed while minor sexual offenses are added. On page 27, sexing, dual enrollment, and violence against school employees. This section was initially located in the back of the code on page 55, but was moved under section three, student notifications. Under sexing section, we have added using any computer or electronic device to the definition of sexing. At the bottom of page 27, the two new sections were added, dual enrollment slash post-secondary notification, and violence against school employees. The dual enrollment section is added to inform students and parents of the requirement OCPS has with post-secondary schools through agreements to inform the school of interdisciplinary offenses that occur on an OCPS campus for a student that is attending a dual enrollment program. The post-secondary school also has the same notification requirement. The violence against school employees sections was added pursuant to Section 1006.07 Florida statutes requiring a notification that students may be disciplined for any violence against a school employee, contracted personnel, or volunteer. On page 28, threats of false reports. Another new section was added pursuant to Section 1006.07 Florida statutes which notifies parents and students that any threat or false report will result in expulsion with or without continued educational services for one school year. Pages 31 through 31 through 41, discipline response code for secondary, self-examples or clarifying language have been added to levels one through four to show the difference between the varying levels of discipline. We will not review each example, however, these infractions include level one, profane, obscene, or abusive language, levels one through three for disrespect, levels one through three for horseplay, levels one through four for harassment, levels two through four for threats, levels two through four for bullying, levels two through four for sexual harassment, levels three and four extortion, levels three and four hazing. She turned to page 31, unauthorized absences. Also on page 31, under level 1M, unauthorized absence from school, the definition is modified to define skipping as opposed to truancy. On page 32, horseplay. Horseplay is a new offense that has been added to levels one through three and is defined as any rough, uncontrolled play or prank that involves two or more students. In addition, you will notice that all consequences for levels one through four have been moved to a box and updated. Also in levels one through four, the phrase refer to mental health services has been revised to referral to guidance services. For level one consequences, parent guarding contact is mandatory, peer mediation, behavior plan, behavior plan contract, and Wednesday schools have all been removed. On page 33, level two, due process language has been added at the beginning levels two through four, which mirrors level one. Page 34, two L bullying. On page 34, we have added OCPS employees, volunteers, or contracted personnel to the bullying offense, and under level two consequences, Wednesday or Saturday has been removed as a response. Page 35, level three, the opening statement for level three has been revised to read, level three offenses are major acts of misconduct that disrupts, that disrupts the orderly operation of the school, school function, or approved transportation- Horseplay is a new offense that has been added to Levels 1 through 3 and is defined as any rough, uncontrolled play or prank that involves two or more students. In addition, you will notice that all consequences for Levels 1 through 4 have been moved to a box and updated. Also in Levels 1 through 4, the phrase "refer to mental health services" has been revised to referral to guidance services. For Level 1 Consequences, parent guarding contact is mandatory, peer mediation, behavior plan, behavior plan contract, and Wednesday schools have all been removed. On page 33, Level 2. Due Process Language has been added at the beginning of Levels 2 through 4, which mirrors Level 1. Page 34, 2L Bullying. On page 34, we have added "O C P S employees, volunteers, or contracted personnel to the bullying offense." And under Level 2 Consequences, Wednesday or Saturday has been removed as a response. Page 35, Level 3. The opening statement for Level 3 has been revised to read: "Level 3 offenses are major acts of misconduct that disrupts the orderly operation of the school, school function, or approved transportation that threatens the health, safety, and property of others." On page 36. 3G Fireworks. Under Section G, fireworks, I'm sorry, firecrackers, fireworks, igniting has been removed and added to Level 4H, firearm destructive devices. Under Section L, smoking and other use of tobacco products, jewels have been added as an example, and the phrase "does not contain THC" has also been added to differentiate between a Level 3 and Level 4 offense. Page 37. Consequences for Level 3. Under the Consequence section, Saturday school has been replaced with detention. Page 39, Introduction, 4D Battery, and 4I Inciting. The first sentence under Level 4 has been revised to state that students should be suspended for 10 days with a potential recommendation for expulsion. In the middle of the page, under 4D Battery, the phrase "in severe cases, the battery of a student may be the basis for expulsion" has been removed since all Level 4s could result in expulsion. At the bottom of the page, the title and definition for a 4I has been revised to match the title and definition provided by Cessar through FLDOE. On page 40. 4M Robbery/Extortion, 4O Sexual Harassment, and 4P Sexual Offense. Under 4M Robbery/Extortion, extortion has been removed and provided its own category under 4BB located on page 41. Also on page 39, the definition for 4O Sexual Harassment has been revised to match the definition provided by Cessar through the FLDOE. And language pertaining to sexual harassment has been removed from 4P Sexual Offenses to avoid confusion. Page 41, 4V Bullying, 4Y Physical Attack, and 4Z Sexual Assault. On page 41, the definition of bullying has been revised to match the definition provided by Cessar through the FLDOE. Also on page 41, students have been added to Level 4Y Physical Attack, and language has been removed from 4Z Sexual Assault as the language is procedural. Pages 44 through 53, disciplinary code for elementary. The majority of the edits you will see to the elementary code include making the language more developmental appropriate, adding examples, and providing clarifying language to differentiate between the varying levels. In addition, we have ensured that the elementary code aligns with the secondary code. The infractions in the elementary code that have been edited to include examples, clarifying language are: Level 1J, Profane, Obscene, or Abusive Language. Levels 1 through 3, Electronic Device Violation. Levels 1 through 4, Harassment. Levels 1 through 3, Misconduct on the Bus. Levels 1 through 3, Horseplay. Level 2, Insubordination. Levels 2 through 4, Other. Levels 2 through 4, Threats. Levels 2 through 4, Bullying. Levels 2 through 4, Sexual Harassment. Level 3, Disrespect. Level 3, Gross Insubordination. Level 3, Contraband. And Level 4, Extortion. Page 44. Tardiness and Unauthorized Absence from Class. On page 44, under Level 1L, tardiness and 1M unauthorized absence from school, the definitions are modified to define skipping as opposed to truancy. On page 45, Consequences. The Consequence sections for Levels 1 through 4 of the elementary code have also been moved to a box and updated. In addition, in Levels 1 through 4, the phrase "referral to mental health services" has been revised to referral to guidance services. For Level 1 Consequences, verbal workman, detention, and return of property were added. Make you pay or replace damaged property, make you stay after school, and make a plan for you to follow with consequences have all been removed. On page 46, Level 2. On page 46, the last sentence was added to the introduction: out-of-school suspension is not an available disciplinary response for a Level 2 violation. On page 47. I'm sorry, on page 40, I'm lost. Okay, on page 47, consequence for Level 2. Under the Consequence section on page 47 for Level 2 offenses, the following was removed: remove you from class and assign you to other activities or jobs at the school, make you pay for or replace damaged property, use a response from Level 1, and participate in peer mediation. On page 48, Level 3, the opening statement for Level 3 has been revised to match secondary. Also in the middle of page 48, under Section 3G, firecrackers, fireworks, igniting, has been removed and added to Level 4H Firearms Destructive Devices. At the bottom of the page, under Section L, smoking and other use of tobacco products, jewels have been added as an example, and the phrase "does not contain THC" has also been added to differentiate between a 3 and a 4 offense. On page 50. Consequences for Level 3. Under the Consequence section on page 50, the following has been added: detention and referral to intervention program. The phrases that were removed from Level 3 consequences include: remove you from the bus, expulsion, refer you to a preventive or treatment program, make payment or restitution for damages, and use a response from Level 2. On page 51, Level 4, the first sentence under Level 4 on page 51 has been revised to match secondary. In addition, the due process statement contained in the introduction has been revised to match all other levels including secondary. Also on page 51, under 4A, Alcohol, the terms giving and asking for alcohol has been added. At the bottom of page 51, the title and definition has been revised to match the secondary and the Cessar definition as provided by FLDOE. On page 52, 4M Robbery/Extortion, 4O Sexual Harassment, and 4P Sexual Offense. On page 52, Level 4M Extortion has been removed and given its own code on page 53, which is now 4BB for Extortion. Also on page 52, about midway down, the definitions for 4O Sexual Harassment and 4P Sexual Offense has been revised to align with secondary. On page 53. 4Y Physical Attack, 4Z Sexual Assault, 4A District Technology Violation, and Level 4 Consequences. On page 53, students have been added to Level 4 Physical Attack, and language has been removed from 4Z Sexual Assault as the language is procedural. Also on page 53, the term unauthorized has been added to 48A District Technology Violation. Under the Consequences section, the phrase "possible referral to counseling program" was removed. On page 55, Procedures for Level 1 through 3 offenses, the title has been revised to include for elementary and secondary. On page 56, Procedures for Level 1 through 3 offenses. The Procedures for Levels 1 through 3 consistently mention suspension. The language has been modified throughout as suspension is not the only consequence a student may receive for a Level 1 through 3 offense. In addition, under Step 8, a parent can appeal a Level 1 through 3 decision to the area administrator. The phrase "nor may a parent utilize this appeal to challenge the factual findings made by the principal with regards to necessity for the suspension" has been removed as the area administrator will review the facts to ensure the facts meet the criteria for a Level 1 through 3 offense. Page 57, Procedures for Level 4 offenses. Step 5 on page 57 was created for organizational purposes, and the language was removed from Step 6. Step 6 on the same page removes the phrase "determine if there is documentation or evidence that the student has a disability requiring exceptional educational services as this is a function of the manifestation determination team, not the area administrator." In addition, under Step 6, the following phrase has been added: "the parent guarding student may elect to bring additional parties to the discipline team meeting of their choosing." The original Step 6 has been removed and is repetitive of Step 5 and out of place. The administrative hearing should come before the recommendation to the superintendent and board. This language has been moved to Step 9 on page 58. Pages 59 through 61, Procedures for IDEA and 504. Similar changes were made for procedures for students who are eligible for services under IDEA or 504/ADA. The phrase "a manifestation determination is not required for the first 10 days of suspension or removal" has been revised to "a manifestation determination is not required until the student has been suspended, removed, in most circumstances, for 10 cumulative or collective." Also on pages 59 and 61, under Step 3, the language has been revised to show that the discipline team meeting and manifestation determination are two separate meetings. Under Step 4 on both pages, the language is revised to state that the procedural safeguards must be provided to parents, not explained. Page 60, Procedures for IDEA. Under Points of Clarification on page 60, the word expedited is removed. Page 64, Procedures for Early Reentry of Fully Expelled Students. The introductory paragraph on page 64 includes virtual and charter schools and alert parents that early reentry will place the student at an alternative placement site. The decision of early entry has been revised from being the decision of the home principal to being the decision of the area superintendent or designee. Step 1 adds language notifying parents, students that they can apply for early reentry midway through the expulsion to the area superintendent. Step 2 has been revised and moved to Step 3. The new Step 2 includes documentation that must be provided before an early reentry will be considered to show what the student has done while out of school. Step 4 requires the reentry plan to be submitted to the superintendent, who can then recommend the early reentry to the board for approval. Thank you, Madam Chair, Board Members, and Dr. Jenkins for your time and input on the 2019-2020 Code of Student Conduct. This includes our presentation for version 1.0. Dr. Jenkins.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, let's see if we have any members of the public wish to address the board. No, we have a slate full. Member Gordon.
My, 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 remarkable. This should be Dancing with the Stars. I know Karen took a lot of time with you. I think, yes, I know that I did. And Dr. Jenkins, this is what I'm talking about. The positiveness, they did not get paid for staying as long as they did with us. But I'm telling you, I mean, we ask every question in the book. Now, I heard that somebody said that I took four hours, but I had it documented in my book that I allowed everybody to leave at 2:30. And it was late in the evening, but I love it because I cannot thank you enough. You actually took the time, you didn't have to do it. And we ask, oh, I'm not the only one, I know they're going to come and say, but this is what I'm talking about, when you meet with us and we get a chance to talk to you and tell you and add in and bring back, you're just so darn professional, and not that others are not, but you did not get angry, you took a lot of time, and I know you cussed when you went out the door, but it's all right, you know, but you did a remarkable job and you're so darn professional. And I wrote down so many, one nice thing I really wanted to say, everything that this new board has asked about, the rights explained, the charter schools, the E S, look at this, I love this. The due process at every level. I mean, I cannot commend you, Dr. Jenkins, this is a terrific team. I cannot commend you, and I do have to apologize to the school psychologist because, not the school psychologist, but the legal counsel, because Woody was in there with us, the general counsel, she couldn't come, you couldn't, but I gave you hell, excuse me, I apologize, I am so sorry, I didn't know you were that brilliant, but he tried to tell me, you know, that you were. Y'all got more? Okay. This is just awesome, but your team, I love the way you all have worked together. When I ask a question, everybody had the same, where did you all get this from? How did you come up with this? You know, the team, the team, the team, everything was the team. That's, that's O C P S, and I just can't thank Woody enough with the legal department. I mean, you have an awesome legal department, but you all are one of the most patient group with over 60-something pages, and I timed you, you started at 8:35 and you ended at 9:00 in your presentation, and you had over 65 pages. So I love you guys, I really do, because you took time with us to make us understand this code, and you added in things that we wanted, and we even gave, got with the superintendent and legal counsel and gave things for, this one was for 2018-19, and we even have given things that we talked about later based on our parents coming in and saying, "I'm not going to sign this paper." So we said, "Well, in 2019-20, we'll go back," and Dr. Jenkins gave us some good things that we could say to add to combat that and make it comfortable for everybody. But I want to say this is Dancing with the Stars. You guys have really done a remarkable job. I'm sorry, it's late in the evening, and I promised Susan and Linda Sutherland that I would keep the joy going on the board late in the evening, but my God. Karen, Karen obviously told me we're not being televised, so thank God. I want to say a great job. Thank you, Madam Chair.
I can't even say what's on my mind. I cannot say what's on my mind.
Thanks for the M and M's.
Let me put it this way, if only, if only I could borrow an ounce of your energy and enthusiasm at 9:05 in the evening. I don't know where it comes from. All right, we have an intercession by Mr. Rodriguez or the superintendent, one of them.
I'm going to jump in, and so
Great job, Woody.
You're kind enough to see that I brought you some, it's not dark chocolate, but it's close enough, right?
Yeah.
But it's because I come bearing false gifts, there is a little bit more left to the presentation. You just heard 1.0, we're going to refer to it as 1.0. These were all the changes that were originally advertised, and they were proposed, and then they had done one round of meetings with y'all, then they did a second round and explained to you what these changes were. But as a result of that, a number of you had additional comments, there were a couple of changes in the law, and so without further ado, I'm going to let them do version, the second act of their play, and then if we could, if it's at the discretion of the board, hold off your comments until then, because you may see some of the changes you've proposed. This version 2.0, the additional changes will come back in a second policy revision. At that time, I'm hoping there will be no additional changes, because really, we have to get it finalized in time for the new year. It'll be approved at the July meeting, but so with that, Madam Chair, I'm going to turn it over to our team to be able to present version 2.0, and we have more peanuts in without, so just raise your hand if you need something.
This will be painless.
Yeah, it should be.
Well, the main person's pain I'm worried about right this minute is, is it Mickey?
Yes.
Do you have to? Do you have to do this one too?
No, ma'am.
Oh, good, because that was a lot
No, I'm done.
To read all of that for thirty-five minutes. Okay, good, okay, good. Somebody else take up? All right, thank you. Now we know why, now we know why.
Now we know why.
I didn't, yeah.
So, I will again present the policy, JIC, and the area administrators, specifically Mr. Boyard, will present the code of
Can you pull your mic in a little closer?
Yes, I can. Sorry. Ooh. So on pages three through five. Can you hear me?
That's it.
Can you hear me now?
You might just want to pull it off. Yeah, but go ahead.
On pages three through five, the zero tolerance for school-related violent crime. So all the changes made herein are due to legislative updates from Senate Bill seventy thirty and section one thousand six point one three of the Florida statutes as amended. So you will see the term serious is taken out, and that's again to follow those changes in the, in the statute where any threats are going to be reported, doesn't have to be necessarily a serious threat, but all threats are going to be consulted with SROs. And then also down here at the bottom of page three, it says such acts may include but are not limited to, and that is changed to such acts do not require consultation with law enforcement. So petty act of misconduct means that we don't have to consult with law enforcement. We typically do if it's going to be criminal in nature. On page five, you will see that the language is modified, and that's to match the statute verbatim. So we didn't come up with any of that, we were just reorganizing to make sure it's aligned with the statute. On page seven, as suggested by Madam Chair Jacobs, we have removed that number three right in front of if a school meets the expulsion criterion. I did go back and I reviewed the unsafe school, the unsafe school choice option as reauthorized by the Elementary and Secondary Education Act, and there's actually not supposed to be a subsection there, so thank you very much for that catch, because that shouldn't have been there, I think it was inadvertently added in prior years, and that's to avoid confusion. And then if we go to, sorry, page nine through ten, under the personally-owned devices and student-issue devices, again, as suggested as Madam Chair, by Madam Chair Jacobs, the jurisdictional language contained in subsection A under both sections two and three has been moved up to ensure that the language applies to that entire section and not just to A, so it was just a reformatting issue. And then again, you'll see that on page ten. And then on pages twelve and thirteen, you'll see changes to the student hazing section, and all the changes made here are to align with section one thousand six point one three five of the Florida statutes. So in this last legislative session, they updated the secondary, or the post-secondary, I apologize, the post-secondary statute for hazing, which gave me pause to go back and check the six through twelve hazing statute. So we went in and we changed the definition to match the statutory definition, and we also added on page thirteen that any student, employee, parent, guardian, or third party who has knowledge or engages in conduct in violation of this policy, or feels they've been a victim of hazing, shall immediately report the concern to school officials, and it can be done so anonymously, and that's directly from statute. And then number twelve says anyone who is a victim or perpetrator of hazing will be referred to the school guidance counselor, and again, that's straight out of statute. So with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Boyard to go over the code.
Before we start, just as a comment, the reason we put two things on there, the reason we put your names if you suggested a change is if there's a question about it, we want to make sure that if you have any additional thoughts on that, you may, it may also remind you that that was a change you brought up during one of your sessions. Also, because none of these changes had come to you before, we couldn't share these with you before tonight's meeting, so just to also show you that your changes should have been incorporated, so.
And if we missed any, please just let us know.
Pardon me?
I said if we, if we missed any of your changes, please just let us know, we try to document all of them.
Thank you. All right.
All right, good evening. On page one, on the acknowledgement page, we have added information pertaining to fortify Florida as suggested by Board Member Gallo and staff. In addition, we have modified the notice to parents, guardians at the bottom of the form to ask parents to sign and return the form to their child's school as suggested by Board Member Castor Dental. Currently, students in grades six through twelve have the ability to sign the acknowledgement page on their device. The schools should, could, and some schools do, print out the acknowledgement page for every student to send home, and a copy is kept at the school in a file. The parents are not required by statute to sign or return the acknowledgement page, and the student would not be relieved of discipline for the parent's failure or refusal to sign. We move on to page eight. As suggested by Board Member Gallo, we have added the following to phrase number three. Please note, per FERPA, disciplinary records are also considered educational records and cannot be disclosed unless one of the above exceptions applies. This is to deter parents from requesting disciplinary records pertaining to other students. Page nine, as suggested by Board Member Castor Dental, we have revised the language pertaining to the release of directory information to read. Please note, directory information as permitted by the School Board of Orange County, Florida Board, will, will only be shared with contracted vendors and pursuant to Board Policy JRA entitled Student Records. In addition, staff has recommended that the term vendor be changed to entity to include all parties. Moving to page seventeen, as suggested by Board Member Cobert, we have added number thirteen, individual schools may implement school uniforms with community input and approval of the principal supervisor. In addition, staff has recommended that the area superintendent be changed to the principal supervisor. Page eighteen, as suggested by staff, number twelve is revised to refrain from littering on the bus, as some students are permitted to bring food slash drinks on the bus. In addition, staff has recommended number thirteen, add the phrase unrelated to school activities in reference to animals, bugs, et cetera, brought on the bus. Staff has also recommended that number fourteen be removed, as some students who are in band do not have an option but to bring their instrument on the bus. And skateboards have been moved to number twenty as recommended by staff. Page twenty-one, serious is removed from the section relating to zero tolerance as required by statute, or what is that policy? Statute seventy thirty and amended section one zero zero six point one three Florida Page twenty-three, this section has been modified to match existing statutory language. In addition, as suggested by staff, reporting through the student grievance procedure has been removed, as parents slash community may not know how to make such a report. Page twenty-four, this language was modified to match the rest of the code with references to threats. Pages twenty-six and thirty-seven, as suggested by Board Member Byrd, the following statement has been added to the introduction of the disciplinary response code, some offenses require consultation with law enforcement if the offense is deemed to be a violation of state or federal laws. Pages twenty-six, twenty-eight, and thirty, as suggested by Board Member Castor Dental, we have added students, OCPS employees, volunteers, or contracted personnel to disrespect. Page twenty-six, as suggested by staff, to avoid confusion with disrespect and profane language, the phrase not directed at another person is added to Level One J. Pages thirty and forty-one, as suggested by Board Member Byrd, CBD oil has been added to Three J, contraband for both secondary and elementary. Page thirty-seven, as suggested by staff, the phrase for your school is removed from Level One E dress code. And page forty-eight, as suggested by Board Member Byrd, elementary and secondary are added to the title of procedures for Level Four offenses. Thank you.
Okay. So a minute ago, a few minutes ago, I asked if there was public comment, was I premature?
No, they're fine.
Okay. Any public comment? All right. We're loaded up again. Member Castor Dental?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and you guys have done an awesome job. This is so much more clear. Just the formatting is, makes it easier to understand, and then the changes in the terminologies, I think this will have an impact when kids are learning what's acceptable and what's not, and when people are applying the consequences. So I think this is very important, and you've done a great job. I have a question. My question goes back to the student, the directory information. Let me get back there, page like eleven?
Nine. Oh, it depends on which version you're on.
I'm looking at the latest version.
It's page nine on version two point oh.
Okay, page nine. So, I'm getting there. I appreciate the changes that you made there, but I have questions. When it comes to the directory information, it looks like some of the information that we would release needs board approval, but then there's also like school-level access, like almost like a principal can allow certain information out, I don't know who the, the gatekeepers are of the information.
So are you, are you asking who, who would release this information?
Yes, who would release it? And then also, if someone did opt out, who's, who's monitoring that, that student's information is not released? So is, is there a way to prevent information being released at the school level and at the district level?
I'm going to defer to
It is my understanding that in the SMS system, which, which is going to switch to Skyward, that you would have a checkbox on there, I'm going to look to see if Maria, perhaps, Superintendent, Deputy Superintendent Vasquez can answer that question, but in the system itself, it should be reflected that you've opted out. And so that is the trigger that you have to tell us you're opting out, because most of the information you're getting, when it comes to directory information, is information the parents are going to want to receive, and it's only very rarely that you get a situation where they don't want to receive that information.
Okay, my, I have a, a follow-up question. When I look at the, the listing of the different types of information that directory information may include, I just, I go back to my thought of, again, this isn't our information to share, and I wonder if, if it's possible to strike all of that information from being released, except for the federal law authorizes military recruiters to obtain telephone numbers of high school students. And then that is the only piece of information that parents can then opt out of. And I know the different vendors, like class rings and yearbooks and class pictures, they, those, those vendors or people that we contract with, they don't really need that information that we provide for them to continue doing their business. They do, they send out flyers, or they post something on the school's website so that parents can reach out to them. So I just, I don't know if, if sharing student information is necessary for them to even conduct their business, so.
Board Member Castor Dental, there's, there, because all of those are listed, doesn't mean that every vendor, vendor or entity gets all of that information? That is the complete list under FERPA that is permissible to be disclosed as directory information. So for example, the Orlando Sentinel calls us, and they share with us that they're going to do a story on one of our student athletes, and they want to talk about how great their grades are and what school they attend, and that they're the starting linebacker, that is information that we would have to tie in and be able to say in the code. This is the kind of information we may release on your child unless you tell us you want to opt out. So that's why that's there. When our vendors are being contracted with, usually all we're providing is usually name and address, it's not even phone number. I don't know that we give out the phone numbers to vendors, because we don't think we want them calling on our behalf or on behalf of OCPS. I could be wrong about that, but I think it's usually just name and address, and that's all we give them, and it's typically to communicate information such as rings, the yearbook pictures, some of that in some schools goes home with the school, and in other cases, they do mail it out. But.
Okay, go ahead.
Madam Chair, so one additional clarification, Member Castor Dental, is specifically the wording was changed to entities instead of vendor, because we have partnerships with City Year, for example, where they have partners that are in the school working with individual students, students at risk, and we share some data with them as well. And so I don't want you to think purely vendors, but think of entities that we may have partnerships in with data sharing.
It does, and I, and I want to be able to, you know, restrict as much as possible information that isn't ours to share, but I understand a partner using that information in a, in a positive way that gives them feedback about the program that, but maybe we can look at just even limiting some of the information that isn't necessary for those kinds of programs. So just an idea.
Madam.
Please.
And so I want to be clear too, this language still would have that come to the board, and an MOU is typically developed, and we can limit that at any time. I don't want, I don't want you to think there's a blanket dispersal, it would still, it's at the board's approval, and through an MOU usually with other entities, we can limit that.
I just want to make sure that those are, that, I under, I understand what you're saying, and I still kind of lean towards the, the side of restricting information, even if it was a news organization calling, I would still say, contact the parents, they have that information.
With the news, we do not give it to the news, because they're not a contracted entity. So that is part of the reason why the policy is written this way, is that they can't have access to that which we don't provide to the general public. Some, some districts, by the way, do not require a contract, so in, in some ways, we have already closed, siphoned it off some by saying it's got to come to the board with a contract provision. I'm, I'm just wondering, is it, would it be helpful if those contracts that have that provision, if that was identified in the descriptor when it comes to the board docs? I mean, would, I'm, maybe we can have a separate conversation about your concern, because you're obviously concerned about the, the disclosure of this, and I'm trying to figure out. The examples we've given, I think, are benign for most individuals, they would want to get that information. Some folks don't want to get anything, and we hear from those, and we take, we exempt them out, but.
Well, this, the way this is described is better than it has been before, and I think in the past, parents did not understand directory information applied to the school district sharing their kid's information to people that they didn't know. They were thinking it was, if they even saw it, they thought it was a school directory with their kid's name and class and their teacher. So this is a step in the right direction, this outlines it, it makes it clear. I would like to go a, a couple of steps farther, but I at least But I at least recognize that this is an improvement. And I can just wait and see what other board members think. Maybe it's just my concern alone. But it's something to continue to learn more about.
Thank you, Member Castredentl. Member Gallo.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, and I don't know if this is something that would go into policy, or into this policy, into the Student Code of Conduct, but we just, the legislature just approved sanctuary cities. And a component of sanctuary cities is the reporting of immigrants, illegal immigrants. Now, I'm being told that that falls under FERPA. So, as a district, we would not have to report or give up that information. But I know that in the Code of Conduct, I did see where we were, you know, trying to make parents aware that what educational data we can't share. And I didn't know if this might be the appropriate place, if it's even valid, that we could put in here that under FERPA, that information stays with the district if that's even the case. Because my concern is this. I don't want, I'm concerned that parents will be nervous about giving us any information and our sharing of information if they think that I, or somebody like that, can get ahold of it. And what is, I guess, our responsibility as a school district in regards to FERPA and illegal immigrants? And maybe that's not a conversation for tonight. But if it's not, then we need to have it. Thank you.
Mr. Rodriguez, is that it?
Well, I'm going to try and answer it by turning it to Attorney Sarah Kapeski. She did some recent research on this, and it was with regards to the registration. She also supports our registration team and Carol McGowan's group. And there were some questions that came up about whether or not we can even ask for some of that information at the outset. So, whether or not we would even be able to confirm or deny whether that was requested. Do you recall the study we had on that and the research conducted by our intern?
Yes. It actually initially came to me because students were enrolling on a tourist visa. And the question was, are we allowed to look at that? Are we allowed to deny enrollment because of it? And the answer is no. So, there's very well-established case law that's been established by the United States Supreme Court that says that we have to enroll every child, no matter what. So, we don't ask, and we don't document it, and we just enroll them.
So, that's not information that we have, that we keep on record?
We have no record responsive to that request unless the legislature says otherwise. So, if, I don't know the new law, and I don't have Eileen or Woody here at my disposal, or Cody here at my disposal to kind of go through and figure out where they're, what those changes are. But we'll certainly look at that and see. If there is a change, obviously, we're going to have to adjust for that. If the legislature's requiring it, we're going to have to figure out what does that mean? And what are we currently collecting? And what can we collect? If it's unconstitutional to ask for that information, then I may have to advise the board, you have a choice of either following the law or not following the law because you deem it to be unconstitutional. And that could be a decision for the superintendent of the board. But probably not for 9:30.
Why don't we not get out ahead of ourselves yet?
Yeah. Not for 9:30 after summit this morning.
Let's leave it that you're going to look into it. And if there needs to be changes, you'll bring those back to us.
Yeah.
Okay? Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does.
Another issue?
My other questions, I think I answered myself. There were some changes in the way we report to Sussar and in our report of different things. But I think because they're reporting issues, it's not necessarily needed in the Code of Conduct.
Great. Thank you. Member Lopez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you so much for your time and for your hard work. Definitely, you did an amazing job. I'm going to sound kind of repetitive with more Castredentl on the structure and the format. I like it a lot, because it's more friendly to the reader. I also like the fact that you have the charts and different letter fonts. So, you have like a summary before you go in detail. So, it's going to be easier for parents instead of just reading the whole paragraph, just maybe look at the, you know, at the topic, or maybe the problem that they're facing, or something that they want to learn, and then go and read in the specific part that they want. I have a question on regards to the Code of Conduct, because in high school, we have Canvas to discuss the Code of Conduct. What do we have in middle school and in elementary school?